Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Durham Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for December 10, 2020 is now in session. At this time, we would, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work of our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead. Tonight, the administration will be presenting information on our strategic plan. The interpreters for this evening are Martha Romo-Guillis and Marty Ramirez. We will be using live transcription for this meeting as an accessibility feature. Thank you for this time to join us tonight. And we will begin. Tonight, we're going to begin with a moment of silence. This past week, we lost someone very dear to us. Sylvia Rogers has been the Assistant to the Superintendent for a number of years, and her untimely passing is weighing heavy on our hearts tonight and will continue to weigh on our hearts. I'm going to open the floor up to my fellow board members and the superintendent, and anyone on our meeting tonight who wishes to make comments regarding Sylvia, and then we will observe our moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Sears, for this opportunity for us to be able to acknowledge the loss of a person that's very dear to us. As we all know, Sylvia's been around working for three superintendents. Central office folks, as well as school-level employees, they knew how to get access to me by going to Sylvia. I'm very grateful for Sylvia's work. She has really helped me to be able to navigate Durham and be able to understand the politics of Durham as a community. She will be dearly missed.
I'll, I'd like to go next. So this entire week, I've been trying to figure out how to express this loss on Facebook like the traditional ways nowadays, Facebook and other social media, and I just couldn't. I couldn't have started a few times, and I hadn't been able to express that. Sylvia, there's a, I think there's a few people in this district that I would consider the heartbeat of the district. Some few people that actually touched the lives of almost in some way every single child in some way, or every single employee. And Sylvia was that person. She was the executive assistant for three superintendents, and that is, that is saying something in itself, as well as working in other school districts. I can easily say that Sylvia's guidance and wisdom is the reason I was able to be a successful chair. Without her, without her words of encouragement, without her insight, information, and organization, there's no way that this district could run, could have run as well as, as well as it did. There were stretches where I would speak to Sylvia every day, even on the weekends, for three months or so. She was very close to my heart, and I felt like I was very close to hers. I actually felt like I was family to her, as many people did, because it was always a lot of smiles, always a lot of, you know, information. But one thing I can say about Sylvia, she cared so very, very deeply for the children of this district. Everything that she advised, everything that she said could be pointed directly as a straight line back to the success of the children in this district. Her worries, her fears, and her excitement. I was telling Nicole last week, or earlier this week, kind of lost track, that it's going to be very difficult to go back into office and not know that Sylvia was there, is there. I know she's going to be there watching over us, but her physical presence will be missed. I will miss her. I miss her now. I miss her laughter. I miss her jokes already. And, you know, when we're in this virtual environment, it's kind of hard to feel the impact of that, because we're just, we just don't see each other physically every day. But just know, when we go back into the building, there's going to be a huge void in, in the absence of Sylvia. I'm hurt. I wish her family well. They're my prayers. Many people are hurting. I'm hurting, and I just, I just want to just thank Sylvia for everything she's done for me and the children of Durham and the staff of Durham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Byer?
I want to echo what's already been shared. We can't go into the Fuller Building and not miss Sylvia profoundly. Sylvia came to Durham Public Schools at the same time I did in 2010, and she is a fierce, loyal employee. She loved Durham Public Schools. She loved her superintendents, and she would do anything to support them, to support the students, to make this district better for children. And she brought light and sunshine into any interaction, and she took so many phone calls. And as you can imagine, they're not always pleasant when you're calling the superintendent. You're usually not calling because you want to do anything but complain. And Sylvia took those like a champ, and she made you her friend with everything that she did. Sylvia loved it when I would bake for her. She would get super excited if I made her pumpkin chocolate chip bread. And I'm not a great baker, but Sylvia made me feel like it was the best thing she'd ever eaten, and just ask me for more every time she saw me. When are you going to bring me some of that chocolate chip bread, Nat? When are you going to bring me some of that? She would give you a hug. Her smile was a hug. And so we're all grieving with the family, and our hearts go out to Sylvia's beloved, beloved family and friends. And we're praying for you and thinking of you as you all grieve and remember. Thank you for sharing Sylvia with Durham Public Schools.
Mr. Raven?
In my limited time of being able to engage Ms. Rogers, you know, the one thing that I could take away from it was she was, she was a genuine person. And when I heard Mr. Lee talk about how she was the heartbeat of DPS, you know, I kind of, when you, when you look at somebody who has such an imprint on an organization, you, you can see them in different ways. I, for instance, I saw her as, as like the, the root, you know, she was the tree. She was part of that tree, and I was fortunate enough to unknowingly have befriended her son of, of over a decade, Chris. And, you know, I always considered him authentic. So sometimes it's one thing of seeing somebody in their, in their work life and how they carry themselves. But when you could translate that over to the offspring that they have, and that they still have that level of authenticity as well, I think that says a lot, because everybody wants to be able to leave something behind. They're people that remember them for. So I think being able to kind of bridge that gap and see what she's left behind, you know, it's something that's beautiful. So, you know, we all know that she's appreciated in that way as well.
Ms. Amstead?
There's so much to say, and so much has already been said about Ms. Sylvia. Fuller Building will not be the same place. I remember so distinctively coming up that back stairway, and Ms. Sylvia was always there to greet me with a huge smile, with laughter. She made sure she kept us in order and straight and organized, but also brought so much joy to our work. And even on a Thursday at 6:30, when we're getting ready to go into a meeting, she's smiling and welcoming us. And then even when it's 11:00 PM and we're leaving, Ms. Sylvia was still there, ready to serve and smile. She cared fiercely about Durham Public Schools. She cared fiercely for our students, and made sure that she helped organize Dr. Mabenga's time, the school board's time, to make sure that our students could succeed and could thrive. She called me her niece, so I affectionately like to call Ms. Sylvia my aunt, and so I am thankful for the time that she served with DPS. My thoughts and prayers are with that family. We will miss her, and truly, there's no one that can fill those shoes in Durham Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Amstead. Ms. Vayadaras?
Thank you so much. I was at Fuller Building today. I am really grateful for the proper staff, and as I walked by her office, I had a moment to sit, to sit on in the third floor of Fuller Building. And, you know, it's, it's definitely painful to know that the DPS family has lost someone as dedicated, as committed, as Sylvia. I was one of those parents that was emailing to have meetings or go to forums, and, you know, I think that when I, when I think about the, the level of commitment that it takes to serve three superintendents, to carry that legacy, to do that, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely something admirable, something that, you know, that, that I could sit with today for, for a bit, and just, and also look at, look over pictures. I actually take pictures when, over the years, that I've gone to board meetings, and some of those board meetings that have had overflow. And in those pictures, there's Sylvia, and she's engaging, you know, with folks and as much. I didn't get to deepen a relationship with her. Over the time, it's, it's been, you know, being, being in proximity and seeing somebody do their job, and definitely, you know, show that level of commitment for the superintendent, and be protective. I mean, I got a lot of no's. I got some yeses. I got, and I can understand, I can respect the fierceness with which folks cultivate those deep relationships, those deep bonds, and, and can do, can do the work, do the best that they can to uphold the team. And so it is, it is something that I had a lot of gratitude for. It broke my heart to hear the news, and I'm really grateful that, you know, that we were notified, and that we could be in prayer, and we could be, you know, holding space, because we are a DPS family, and every single part of the DPS family brings something, something very unique. And we can all bring, you know, who we are. And Sylvia brought who she was. She was fierce. She was also knowledgeable. She had experience. She has, you know, like connections, deep connections. And those are all things that I admire, and, you know, things that, it's her legacy that we can continue, we can continue to look, look out for DPS in the way that she did, look out for our families, and, and continue to form the, you know, the, the bonds that are going to keep us for the long haul. So, thank you so much.
Any other reflections from staff or board members? Thank you, everyone. I'll, I'll lead into our moment of silence with just a quick remembrance that I cherish the quiet moments that, that I had with Sylvia. Most of the moments were frantic. There's a board meeting. There's 7,000 people in the hallway, and she's organizing, moving pieces to make sure that we have a smooth experience. Moments where we're, you know, setting up for a hearing to support students who are looking to transfer or appealing some board policy. And it feels somewhat crass to me, but, you know, we, we communicated silently in those moments, and I know if she's looking down on me that, that she would be doing this. And so before we take our moment of silence, I mean, we had this kind of secret handshake where we would do this, and it was just a quick, you know, I see you, you see me, and it was some love for one another. And I will miss her deeply and appreciate very much her service. And so tonight, I ask that we all observe a moment of silence and remember Sylvia Rogers, and keep her in your hearts and your prayers. Thank you, everyone. Item three on our agenda tonight is celebrations, and I will pass it to Chip Sudrith, please.
Good evening, board members. We ordinarily don't do celebrations during the work session, but as we will not have a formal board meeting at the end of the month, we did want to take an opportunity to do, to celebrate our Student of the Month. It's especially important that we do that this month, because that Student of the Month is from Riverside. And darned if we were going to allow Tanya Williams-Leathers to slip away from us without getting the chance to celebrate her Student of the Month. Principal Williams-Leathers is on the verge of a great new adventure in district leadership in a different district, so I'm very, very cross with her for departing. But I am very happy that she gets the opportunity to do what she loves most, which is celebrating a Riverside pirate. And with, without any further ado, I turn the microphone over to Principal Tanya Williams-Leathers.
Thank you, Chip. Good evening, board members, administration, community members, and especially warm welcome to Riverside High School's Student of the Month, Irotakunda Gilbert and his family. I am pleased to recognize Gilbert as Riverside High School's Student of the Month. Gilbert emphasizes the importance of being hardworking. In his life experience, that means walking for hours and miles to school in the desert heat, or through the rainy season's torrents, to attend a school in Kenya near the refugee camp where he was born. Gilbert emphasizes the importance of education, and I'm sure that we all agree that the value of education. But from Gilbert's perspective, as a teenager who lived his first 14 years in desperate circumstances, displaced from his family's home country, and cut off from the opportunities and connections of his community, education is the only way to move beyond his limiting conditions and build a successful life, which can support him and his family. Gilbert's belief in helping others because what goes around comes around may seem trite, but he has lived through the ups and downs of the fortunes wheels in many ways that only a refugee can describe, and is committed to helping others through the power of his commitment to learning. Gilbert has a tremendous focus on his ultimate goal, a degree in biophysics and a career that uses that knowledge to help others, and to earn a living that supports himself, his family, and his community. He has powerful self-advocacy skills and seeks out support from mentors, teachers, and his community, to understand the path to his future, and to implement a strategy that will take him there, step by step. Gilbert is a self reflective learner who examines his own motivations, skills, and assumptions, and uses his self knowledge to refine his efforts toward achieving his goals. Gilbert has a strong sense of community and uses his well-developed academic skills and his fluency in both English and Swahili to advise and tutor younger students through his volunteer work with World Relief. Gilbert is inspiring to many because of his motivation, perspective, and heart. There is no doubt that Gilbert will leave a lasting impression on all who come into contact with him, as he did within the Riverside community. Please join me in congratulating Gilbert as Riverside High School Student of the Month. Gilbert, I hope you'll say a few words.
Gilbert, we would appreciate it if you would say a few words, because otherwise the camera's just not going to cut over to you, and we wanted to see you and your family.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much, DPS, for selecting our school and honoring its house with this award. And, well, this is very important, an important moment for me and the school. I actually work alone. I work accompanied by valuable staff members, a dedicated student who have tried work day, day and night to, to make the school proud. I would especially like to thank the teachers who believed in us and gave us continuous knowledge, which enabled us to work to give them the best in our capacity. I'm grateful to everyone who has always been part of my journey, from my family to friends, from the principal teachers and everyone. It's a pleasure to, in this, this moment, this beautiful moment, the presence of them all. Each one of them have enabled me to bring their ideals into reality. Thank you so much to all who showed me some sort of mentorship, and I appreciate it, Tanya Williams.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Gilbert. We have one final celebration that is not on the agenda. It is a bit of a surprise, and I would like to turn the microphone over back to Superintendent Pascal Mabenga.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. Let me also take this opportunity to say in a very official way goodbye to Principal Williams-Leather. I think I said a few words during our principals' meeting, and I was able also to text my colleague from the other district, Nat, to be able to mess with my principals again. So you'll be missed. You've done some good work at Riverside High, and that's the reason why we are really struggling at these points to find a replacement. Nobody can replace Tanya. Job well done, and I will be watching you afar as you be pursuing your dream. Job well done. So at this point, I would like to take this opportunity to say officially another goodbye to our friend Arasi Atkins, our Assistant Superintendent for HR, who came to us roughly around the same time that I came to DPS. She was highly recommended by several folks that really knew her work across the state. Arasi, you are a professional all the time. And I just want to name few of your accomplishments for the past few years that you have been at DPS. You came in the middle of the work that we're doing with our salary study, our schedule. You picked up that work. You were able to finish it up in a very professional way. I know that was really good work. Well done. There may be five or 10% folks that did not agree with the work, but you did really thorough work, and I appreciate that. Arasi came in as we're working on our strategic plan as well. One of our priorities was pretty much to be able to bring Latinx employees, as you've done well, while making sure that we're meeting our goal all the time. Also, Arasi, one of the priorities was pretty much, one of the goals was to make sure our employee turnover will go down, and that she really exceeded that expectation. And then one other initiative that she was working on was pretty much to be able to work with our TAs and get them ready to be prepared to become teachers. Arasi, that's just few of the initiatives that you were able to undertake in your role as Assistant Superintendent for HR. You'll be tremendously missed. Much respect for you. As I said this in another setting, job well done, and you will be a friend to me all the time. Job well done, please. Members of the board and the staff, let's take this opportunity to say a good goodbye to our friend Aras Atkins. Mr. Sears, that's pretty much conclude my remarks, but I'm going to pass it on to Chip. He has a plaque that he would like to share with everyone, and Aras will make sure that's all. We'll get it to you in a very safely manner.
Yes, absolutely. With deep appreciation for your outstanding leadership and dedication to the Durham Public Schools community, Arasi, your colleagues will find other ways to celebrate you, but this was one way that was appropriate for a formal setting. And we will all miss you. Your dual commitments to the good of Durham Public Schools and for the good of Durham Public Schools' employees as individuals is severely going to be missed.
Back to you, Mr. Sears. Thank you, Dr. Mabenga. Chip, that concludes our celebrations, correct?
Correct.
We'll take that as a yes. Okay, great. Thank you, Chip. Board members, we are on item four, Agenda Review and Approval. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Ms. Byer?
Mr. Sears, I, I just need some clarity about whether we're going to discuss in the academic services, the EOC testing and the requirement for students to test in person. And if that's going to be covered there, I look forward to discussing it there or adding a separate agenda item if it's needed.
Or Dr. Hardy, sorry.
It's not included, but if you want to add that, that will be fine.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mabenga. If, if you all are able, could we add that as item 8D? After the Plan B update?
It's been moved. Well, we'll see if there are any additional amendments. Ms. Byer has requested that we add item 8D, Discussion of EOC In-Person Testing Requirements. Are there any additional amendment requests, Mr. Lee?
No. No, no, I'll be requesting a motion after, after the general business is done. The official thing that I'll be doing is requesting a motion to reconsider a previous vote. So that's not an agenda item. That's a, that's a standard motion.
Okay, so we have a potential additional item at the end, but we'll, we'll reconcile that as a motion. Any additional agenda amendments or changes? Can I have a formal motion, please, that may or may not include Ms. Byer's amendment?
I'm moving approval. Go ahead. Go ahead. You got it.
I move approval of the agenda as amended?
A second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Lee, that we, that we amend the agenda to add item 8D, a discussion of in-person EOC testing. We will do roll call votes this evening. Ms. Amstead?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis? Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Mr. Raven?
Aye.
Ms. Vayadaras?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion passes 7-0. It's unanimous. The agenda is approved with the amendment. Item six is General Public Comment. Submitted public comments have been reviewed by the board and posted to the DPS website. As many as possible will be read aloud during the public comment period. We will allot 30 minutes for public comment, and I will ask that Mr. Sudrith allow one minute per comment, up to 30 minutes, and we will see how far we can get. Mr. Sudrith?
Thank you, Mr. Sears. I am setting a timer for 30, I'm setting a timer for one minute. And I will begin our public comments. The first is from Ed McGlenahan of Sedgfield Street. "Please consider raising the COVID test positivity rate for returning to in-person learning. Many countries in Europe have kept their schools, especially elementary schools, open even during the ongoing surge in COVID cases across the continent. In France, for example, even with a national test positivity rate over 11% in recent weeks, schools have remained open and have experienced very low case rates among students, 0.06% of students." 0.06% of students in the most recent week, according to the New York Times. Relatedly, please do not consider the end of January as the last possible opportunity for schools to reopen for in-person education. With school personnel high on the priority list for vaccinations, it's plausible that a substantial share of DPS staff could be vaccinated against COVID-19 by March, thereby dramatically reducing the already relatively low risk associated with reopening elementary schools. The next comment is from Mark Newsom of Winona Way. Why have we been so reluctant to adopt some process to have teens play a select number of sports during this pandemic? When did golf or swimming become outlawed? Even basketball is being considered in other districts, provided masks and distancing rules are followed. I am not in favor of depriving these kids of socialization and exercise at any cost. I am willing to help, but Durham must do better. The next comment is from Nina Cooper of Lynn Road. Hello, board members. Please keep the COVID-19 percentage at 4%. Thank you. The next is anonymous. The metric should stay at 4%. As a teacher, I am worried and scared to go back to in-person learning. I am scared for my students and families. We should not go higher. Schools across the U.S. are at a 3% metric. Next is Shannon Schlick of Ainsley Court. The metrics that are set for 4% are appropriate and fall in line with looking out for the best interests and health of all employees and students. The metrics should not be raised. Following is Lindsay Guaman of Brandywine Road in Chapel Hill. My biggest concern is asymptomatic spread. Even if staff and students are tested before returning to in-person learning, the test is only valid for that one day. I believe the rate of positivity should remain at 4% or below. If a decision will not be made until January 7th, the school start date will need to be pushed back to allow schools to be prepared to open. As a side note, I have a contact tracing certification and have already lost a family member to COVID. Next is Hannah Steele of University Drive. I'm a public school teacher for Durham Public Schools and am nervous about potentially going back to school. I understand why parents and students want to come back, but at the same time, we need to think logistically about coming back to in-person learning. Cases are rising like crazy in North Carolina, and I fear that going back to in-person learning will only add to the amount of cases that are currently happening in North Carolina. Next is Michael King of Forest King, uh, Forest Creek Drive. If the percentage is below 4% and trending downward, partially reopening at 4% seems fine. However, opening only to then shut back down after a few weeks, yanking our children back and forth seems like a bad idea in so many ways. The next comment is from Heather Hall of Benton Street in Hillsborough. As an EC pre-K teacher responsible for toilet training, feeding, and hand-over-hand prompting, social distancing will not be possible. When we met with these school board members present here, they had few answers for how they can best protect us teachers working with their most vulnerable population if and when we return in person. I commend the board for making safe choices thus far. The choice to reopen in January in person would not be supported with any additional measures. There's only so much that can be done to make in-person learning safe. With community spread on the rise through the winter months and UNC's experts confirming that school spread will reflect community spread, what is the logic of opening schools when case numbers in the community are higher than they've ever been? I urge the school board to honor the quantitative measure of community spread at less than 4% when we return to in-person learning. I urge the community to consider the facts. Cases are higher now, predicted to increase, and there is only so much an underfunded education department can do when already providing one-to-one technology and working to make virtual learning successful. And that ends the time. The next comment is from Larissa R. of Winding Arch Drive. First, I wanted to say thank you so much for all you have been doing. This is not easy on anyone, and I can't imagine the stress of having to make decisions for the entire district. I would, I wanted to ask the board to please go ahead and vote on staying remote. Numbers are climbing at an alarming rate. Cooper is putting in new restrictions. Everyone's anxiety levels are climbing. Many families like ours are choosing in-person in the hopes we get to keep our teachers, who at this point don't truly have a choice to stay remote. Remote learning isn't easy for anyone, but knowing for sure we will stay remote and keep our teachers would be a tremendous relief for everyone. Thanks again. Next is Leslie Ann Yell of Bill Ash Road in Moncur. I know planning for the good of all of our students, families, and staff is not an easy job, and it's especially difficult now. So I'd like to first thank each of you for the work, time, energy, and thought you've put into every decision. Your dedication to our good is much appreciated. As the teacher at Parkwood Elementary, I would like to request the decision of going back in person to be made earlier rather than later. Our administration, teachers, and support staff have been working so much to prepare for every day's lessons as well as for the potential return of students. To make the potential return of students the absolute best as it can be, we'd like as much time as possible to transition from fully remote to hybrid. Therefore, please move the deadline for a decision to an earlier date so that we can maximize our efforts. Thank you for your consideration. Next is Alexis Watson of Lake Brandt Drive in Cary. Please keep the positivity rate at 4%. Carlton Watson, also Lake Brandt Drive, but Durham, uh, please stay on Plan C. Um, April Russell of Carroll Street in Durham, please stay on Plan C. Keep positivity rate at 4%. Uh, Kim Brown and Kim Jones, um, these appear to be multiple people, uh, with the same name and address saying, um, please stay on Plan C. Next is Lois Mayfield of Lednum Street, Durham. I would like for the range to stay measured at 4%. It is about the safety of everyone's concern. Next is Jamila Harris, Glenbrook Drive in Durham. My son can remain home for school. Becky Boncheck of Winford Place, Durham. I would like to ask the board if there's a way to survey DPS parents about how much having the same teacher for their child is impacting the decision to either opt for in-person or for ignite. I have three students at Pearson Town and two of my kids' teachers looped with their class from last year. This has been an unbelievable gift in a terrible uncertain time. I absolutely don't want my kids to have different teachers halfway through the school year. Even for those parents who aren't in this situation, I am hearing the same concern voiced over and over again. Many parents are opting for in-person instruction just because they think that's the only way to keep their current teachers, not because it's the option they really want. Our teachers don't want to return in person, but have said things like somebody has to, or I won't quit my job over it. If we truly knew how many people would opt for in-person school and be okay with having a different teacher, I bet the number would be much smaller than it currently is. This may even allow for more teachers to stay home. I also don't think it's fair to ask teachers to have office hours after a full day of in-person instruction when they will not have any breaks from the kids all day. And that ends the, uh, allotted minute. Next is Nicole Tripp of Courtney Creek Boulevard. If health is the primary concern of our students and staff, it would be beneficial to remain in Plan C until cases have stopped surging. We as teachers feel very unsafe going back into the classroom when there have been new cases every other day in our district. Please make health and safety a priority. Pam Jones of Morehead Avenue, please stay on Plan C. Stay at 4% or lower. Tamela Chakrabarti of Clermont Road. I am a DPS teacher and a parent. I support using the metrics of community spread of COVID-19 being below 4% for two weeks before in-person can be considered. I am concerned with the surge of cases throughout our community and country. I question whether elementary students being able to attend live instruction two days per week is worth the risk of exposure to thousands of students, staff, and family members, especially since the number of COVID-19 cases continues to rise. I'm afraid students and staff may be returning at the same time that the community exposure risk is the highest so far. Next is Connie Modlin of Valley Forge Road. I'm very concerned about the health of students and staff if in, if in-person learning is resumed before COVID-19 is understood and contained. We all know how quickly the ordinary cold and flu spreads in the winter. I know from personal experience that COVID happens in spite of constant hand washing and mask wearing. Online learning is certainly not ideal, but so much better than funerals. Thank you. Next is Alyssa Modlin of Valley Forge Road. Recently, due to their involvement at the in-person conference for public school superintendents, two of the attendees so far have tested positive for COVID. As the conference was held only last week, an incubation period for COVID is up to 14 days. It is possible that more attendees will develop symptoms and test positive in the coming days. The attendees were adults who are capable of following the guidelines of frequent hand washing, wearing masks for the entirety of the time they're around others, and practicing social distancing. Yet still the virus spread there. The executive director, Jack Hoke, has stated, obviously hindsight is 20/20. If we had a do-over, we probably would have done virtual. There is already a high correlation between those counties who have allowed students to return to in-school learning and the counties that are in red for critical spread of the virus. Raising the 4% metric for positive tests in the county for students to return to in-school learning would quickly put Durham County in the red for critical spread. It is not only naive to think that students returning to in-school learning would not have a dramatic impact on the county's infection rates. It is negligent on your part to allow for looser metrics to allow for students to return to in-school learning. And the timer has expired. Next is Marcia Harrell of Mountain Ridge Road in Rougemont. Before the board forces teachers back into a dangerous work environment, they should agree to meet in a classroom in a 60-year-old school with poor ventilation. They should have dinner there together before the meeting to emulate the situation teachers will be placed in each day at breakfast and lunch if face-to-face learning is restarted. If you aren't willing to do this, then you shouldn't be forcing it on our teachers and staff. Next is Kim Brown of Shepherd Street. Please stay on Plan C. Next is J.S. of Montebello Parkway. Thank you, members of the school board and this DPS administration for your continued efforts to maintain the best learning environment possible for our children under these current pandemic circumstances. This is very difficult time in our community, given the rising rates of COVID infection we are seeing moving into the holidays. It is worth noting that though a vaccine is likely only days away from approval in the U.S., it will take several months to distribute. We don't yet know how many people will take the vaccine, when children can take the vaccine, if those who are vaccinated can still pass on the virus to others, nor do we know what the long-term durability of the vaccines will be. On that latter point, public health experts suggest that we continue social distancing and mask use for quite some time, even after being vaccinated against SARS-CoV-2. For all of these reasons, I implore you to continue planning for in-person learning under Plan B. Our community is being challenged to adapt to a situation that must not be viewed as short-term. The option for families to continue virtual learning is appropriate, but it is not appropriate to put yet another burden on families with young children who are struggling under Plan C. The next comment is from the Durham People's Alliance Education Action Team. The education action team of the People's Alliance urges the school board to set the minimum score that DPS teachers can assign to the EOC CTE portion of students' grade as at 90%. This would offset some of the difficulties with virtual learning and make it so that students' grades are not tied to their ability to be attentive to a test in a classroom that is unfamiliar or risky to their health and well-being. Next is, uh, comment from Katrina Moore of Southwest Durham. It is significantly longer than our one minute. The barking dog and the wise owl. This is the analogy we use to teach our elementary students how our brains respond to stress. The barking dog is our fight-flight-freeze response, and the wise owl is the problem-solving brain where enduring learning happens. The only thing that works to calm the barking dog is to establish connection and safety. Then we can redirect to problem solving. Collectively, our barking dogs have been getting a lot of exercise since March. DPS has planned to safe return to in-person instruction based on the expertise of ABC Collaborative to ensure safety in the immediate crisis. But our ever-changing crisis responses have robbed us collectively of time to work in problem-solving mode to focus on long-term impact. Taking the long view, it is a real possibility that the short-term solution of Plan B in Q3 will negatively impact the district's ability to return K-12 to Plan A in August 2021. Here are some inconsistencies between the clinical conditions of return to in-person schooling and the most fundamental ingredients of sound pedagogy and trauma-responsive schools. And then there is a list. This is all available on the DPS website in the public comments that are saved. Next comment is anonymous. I think the board needs to make the decision tonight not to reopen for quarter three. Cases are rising, which was expected and will continue to rise. To drag schools, teachers, and families along with the idea that we may open in January is irresponsible. Teachers are spending time trying to plan for something that will not happen in January. That is a waste of resources, time, and money. In addition, teachers have been given no guidance on this. I am an elementary school teacher here in Durham. This week I had two students test positive for COVID, and we aren't even in schools. The only things teachers have been told directly are, we may go back. You will have two cohorts. You might teach online or you might teach in person. You might not have your students. You might not be in your same classroom. You might be teaching online and in person. You will be given some PPE. However, to open in quarter three, I would need to be prepared to teach in person in three weeks if I only work my contract hours, while simultaneously continue to teach virtually with still little to no guidance or support from the district to do even that. And that is the end of the timer. And then our final comment is from Rebecca Torres of Bullery Street. Schools do not need to open. Why put our lives in danger? Board members, that concludes the public comments portion of tonight's meeting, and all of the comments are available on the webpage for this board meeting, uh, at, at dpsnc.net. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutcliffe. Board members, as I usually do, I have failed to go through the agenda as it has been written, and we will come back and look at item number five, board work session minutes from November 5th, 2020. Board members, do we have a motion regarding the review and approval of the minutes?
I move that we, uh, approve the minutes from the last session.
I second.
It's been moved by Ms. Vayadara, seconded by Ms. Amstead, that we approve the minutes from November 5th, 2020. If we have further discussion, I will recognize Ms. Byer.
Thank you. I am happy to approve these. I think on page five, there is a, there's an error. There, there seems to be a poll quote from me and a timestamp that's something that our, um, assistant uses in preparing meetings. If we could, I would move to approve them without that chunk that has my name highlighted. I don't know if you all see that on page five. There's four line, but yeah, thanks.
Ms. Vayadara, do you accept the amendment to the motion?
I accept the amendment. Um, I move that we, uh, approve the minutes as amended.
Ms. Amstead, good for you.
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion of the minutes? Ms. Amstead, your vote.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
I vote aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Raven.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadara.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved unanimously. Board members, item seven is the consent items. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items on the consent agenda. Any board member can pull one of the items uh, off of the consent agenda for further discussion, or we can make a motion to approve the consent items as a group. What is your pleasure?
Um.
Vayadara.
Thank you so much. Um, I would like to, um, request that we pull, um, item seven E, the purchase of laptop devices for instructional assistance. Um, there's just a question about the laptops, um, that I've heard in, in, for new assistants, and I'd like for that to be for discussion.
Okay. Is that, is that a quick item that you'd like to discuss now, or would you like to pull it off?
Um, well, we can discuss now. It's mainly the questions that I received where, you know, whether there would be the same laptops that teachers get, touchscreen, like any, any model specification, but, um, yeah, just wanted to elevate that or highlight that that was a
Oh, the, the, the model and specification is included in the materials, but it's the same version that we purchased last month for instructional, um, assistance. Uh, Mr. Medesto and Mr. was able to have conversations with the state that allowed us to utilize, um, CARES Act funding in different ways more freely. Um, and so with this purchase, we will be able to, um, purchase it for all of our IAs, whereas before we only purchased for half of them.
Thank you.
Ms. Vayadara, does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, I will accept a motion or amendments.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
I second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Raven, that we accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Amstead.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis. Ms. Lewis. Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Raven.
Aye.
Ms. Vaidaras.
Aye.
And the chair of this meeting votes aye, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Moving to item eight A, Strategic Plan Priority One Updates. Dr. Hardy, I believe that is you.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Ms. Smith, if you could please up, please pull up our priority one strategic plan presentation. Good evening, board members. Dr. Rabinga, it is a pleasure this evening for us to have some conversation regarding priority one, our strategic plan. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Tonight, we will be discussing strategic plan priority one, increased academic achievement. Our strategic plan serves as our roadmap for improved outcomes for students. And this priority specifically includes the implementation of processes, structures and strategies to create the conditions for each and every student in DPS to be successful. Within our update this evening, we will provide information on the work that's currently in place, what is in progress. We will give insight to our future work as we strive towards our established priority one benchmarks. I will also have the opportunity to introduce many of our team members and goal team leads that are with us this evening and will be available for questions. Next slide, please. Going from strategies to implementation is an example of the shared accountability and distributive leadership within DPS, which is also noted as one of our core beliefs. Rooted in our strategic plans, vision, mission and beliefs, our processes, structures and strategies connect back to the initiatives and actions that have been recently approved in our school improvement plans. Next slide, please. You'll go one more, please. The work of our strategic plan is the work of the Durham Public Schools family. Each and every team member is involved in our strategic plan. Today, I would like to have the opportunity to discuss our leads. So for our priority leads, it's myself and Dr. Stacy Stewart, Assistant Superintendent for School Transformation. We also have with us today our goal team leads. Chanel Sidbury, Executive Director of K twelve Curriculum Instruction. Jamie Stroud, Director of School Innovation. Dr. Laverne Maddox Perry, Senior Executive Director for Student Support Services. Dr. Kelvin Bullock, Executive Director for Equity Affairs. Mr. Matthew Hickson, Director of Online Learning, and Dr. Julie Pack, Executive Director for C T E and Magnet Programs. You can also see some of the goal team members that are listed on this slide. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that especially for priority one, the constant feedback that we are receiving from our teachers and our community members, we are regularly engaging with our superintendent's teacher advisory council, our superintendent's student advisory council, as well as our superintendent's principal advisory council, as we work together collaboratively for priority one. Next slide, please. This continues to show the cross sectionality and the intersection of all of the work that happens. Although the majority of this work is in academic services, we are not able to do and have success with our work without the partners that we have in research and accountability, operational services, human resources, just to name a few. It is dependent upon us to work together in Durham Public Schools to operationalize and to ensure that we have a culture of high expectations for our children to succeed. You'll go forward two slides, please. As a reminder, priority one focuses on academic growth, grade level proficiency, graduation rate and technology as an instructional tool to personalize learning. Next slide. This slide shows the interconnection between our goal one A and goal one B regarding growth and proficiency. Next slide. And here you will see the strategies that we have for goal one A. Next slide. We'll go through our benchmarks fairly quickly for our priorities. As you know, during the, during last school year, we did not have the administration of many of our assessments. And so we want to make sure that, and as we are in this year in Plan C, our primary focus has been to ensure that we have the social and emotional well being of our children while making sure that they have access to high quality resources. Next slide, please. As you can see here, this is goal one B. And what you will see are the strategies that we have for goal one B, which focuses on instructional supports and interventions, as well as our high quality curricula as an data dashboard. Next slide. Here you will be able to see the benchmarks. Um, and for goal one B, what you will see, of course, as mentioned before, we have graded out the benchmarks for nineteen twenty, and you will see what our target is for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Next slide, please. So here, what I want to do is to discuss the strategies that we have that are in place, that are in progress, and what we have that are going to be next steps. There are several strategies that we have put in place, including goal setting checkpoints, academic intervention and supports and instructional coaches, our district level and school level professional learning teams. We have established curriculum and professional learning with a focus on high impact teaching strategies, and you see that professional learning that is occurring with our teachers as well as with our district leaders. Strategies that are currently in progress are the creation and delivery of effectiveness surveys. That cycle of feedback that we get is so important as we're making decisions in Durham Public Schools, ongoing professional development, as well as related evaluation data and the presence of our curriculum and instruction team on our district website. Future plans continue on our focus of increasing culturally relevant and anti bias and anti racist curriculum and pedagogy, and making sure that we have professional learning that is connected to those topics to ensure that we are changing the culture of our classrooms to ensure that each and every student is academically, socially and emotionally successful. And making sure that we have our ongoing curriculum adoptions. We want to thank the board for their ongoing support um in our approval of our curriculum materials for our students, knowing that as we move forward, we still do have secondary math, and we will be working on that when we are in a place where we can gather and have the engagement um from our community. Next slide, please. Now transitioning to goal one C, aims to increase our graduation rate to at least ninety percent. And as you can see, this goal has five strategies. This work again is a collaborative work to ensure that we are making sure that each and every subgroup is improving and making sure that our students, when they graduate, they are ready to succeed. Next slide, please. We would like to thank our partners in research and accountability specifically for this particular area, but also with all of the data that we have in priority one, because what it does is it allows us to make sure that we are informed and providing the professional learning and support that we need. This data dashboard reveals closely how we have been to each of our, of our benchmarks. The work of increasing cohort graduation is a link to decreasing our dropout rate. Our strategies include an emphasis on earlier intervention consistent with strategy two and making sure that we have district wide structures to support our youngsters. You can see that we have been able to meet our benchmark in two thousand eighteen nineteen and with rounding in nineteen twenty, and we are focused and committed to working towards that for the twenty 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 one academic year. Next slide, please. A review of the three year trend provides interesting insights to our successes as well as identifying areas for continuous improvement. For example, we are pleased that in our cohort graduation rate increased overall, and specifically, we would like to highlight two student groups. Black students with a point, excuse me, four percentage point increase and students with disabilities with a one point two percentage increase. We are confident that we are more able to implement action steps to continue this increase. We will continue to work on increasing areas that we know we have opportunities, such as looking at our Hispanic students as well as our limited English proficient students. We are working collaboratively, the areas in academic services, the Office of Equity Affairs, Student Services, our ESL Department, as well as our multilingual resource center, to ensure that we are having a laser like focus so that we are making sure each and every student has the opportunity they need and deserve to graduate. Some of the strategies that we are putting in place, we are going to discuss in further slides, but making sure that we have that early emphasis is critically important. Next slide, please. As you can see that we are going to discuss our in place, our in progress and next steps. The team has been instrumental in proposing revised minimum graduation requirement. We appreciate the board's approval. This has allowed us to ensure that we have greater flexibility and students have the opportunity for authentic coursework. Our school counselors and school social workers are working as professional learning communities to discuss prevention and intervention strategies to keep students engaged. It is important that our school counselors work with each and every student with their four year plan to ensure that they have the opportunity to graduate with their cohort. And as we see students who may be coming disconnected from school, that we use strategies to reengage students. We are making sure that especially for this year that we are starting some of those strategies even earlier than before, such as Evening Academy, to make sure that we are able to get students back on track. Graduation coaches work very closely in our high schools to support our school counselors to make sure that any of our students who are in need of help, but specifically our students who are identified as limited English proficient. We are in our, entering our third year, as I mentioned, of Evening Academy, which is available to ensure that students have the opportunity to get back on track. In progress, much of the work currently in progress is a result of the adjustments that we have needed to meet to make because students are in remote learning. We are analyzing our student engagement data to ensure that we appropriately respond to students who may be disengaged or maybe have the potential to be off cohort. Our student services team works very closely with our school leaders to identify students, to make contacts, home visits, and to ensure that they have the opportunities. You will see here that we're also partnering with our C T E department to make sure that we are using Zello for those four year plans and to make sure that we are looking specifically within each school and the disaggregated data to identify students who need help towards graduation. Our next steps include making sure that we work with research and accountability. We talked earlier about a data dashboard, developing a centralized early warning tracking system that goes hand in hand to make sure that we're providing resources for our youngsters at the earliest age possible and making sure that we're being mindful and that we recalibrate as we continue to get more data. Next slide, please. Now we are transitioning to, to goal one D, which is using technology as a tool for accelerating and personalizing student learning. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Of the nine areas of feedback for goal one D, our goal team has prioritized four areas for measurement and created a staff survey to assess our use of technology to accelerate and personalize learning. The survey saw an improvement from thirty three percent to forty four percent implementation of key strategies for goal one D. This means that forty four percent of our teachers are starting to implement the strategies. Next slide, please. These survey results indicate how frequently teachers are using technology to personalize and accelerate instruction. The team collects survey data each year in the spring so that we can anticipate that this year, the survey twenty twenty one will show an increase in technology based on our current virtual learning environment. In general, the survey indicated that about half of our teachers are using technology weekly to assess and provide feedback to students. The goal one team is focused on increasing the percentage of teachers using technology on a weekly basis to check student progress and to provide timely feedback to our youngsters. Next slide, please. These survey results indicate how frequently teachers are using technology to model and teach digital citizenship. In general, the survey indicated that fewer teachers provided direct instruction and modeling on digital citizenship than in the use of technology for accelerating and personalizing instruction. The goal one D team is focused on increasing the percentage of our teachers modeling and teaching digital citizenship through professional development on the ISTI standards, and ISTI is the International Society for Technology and Education. Next slide, please. The data dashboard for goal one D brings to light significant progress in technology adoption. Our ongoing work will focus on professional learning as well as ongoing improvements to instruction through our learning management system canvas. We will also place an ongoing focus on the sustainability of technology use. According to our data dashboard, we were able to meet and exceed the forty percent benchmark. This indicates that staff are regularly using technology to personalize and accelerate instruction in the nineteen twenty twenty school year. We anticipate being on track to meet the sixty percent benchmark when we analyze the teacher survey that will be upcoming this spring. Next slide, please. The goal one D work has been accelerated by the remote learning environment due to COVID nineteen. Since the previous year's survey, we have implemented a one to one device deployment initiative, adopted Canvas as our district learning management system, developed a Canvas coach role to support teachers at each school with our Canvas adoption, and developed online teaching and learning expectations for each grade band. We are continuing our support of Canvas coaches with ongoing professional development from Instructure, which is the parent company of Canvas, as well as asynchronous and synchronous professional learning from our academic services team. This spring DPS will continue to strengthen our support with Canvas implementation and provide ongoing professional learning opportunities focused on blended learning engagement strategies, differentiation, as well as the ISTI standards for students. We look forward to measuring significant growth in our ability as a district community to accelerate and personalize learning for our youngsters. Next slide, please. This slide provides a summary of our year two progress towards meeting our priority goals. As mentioned before, we do not have data for one A and one B from the nineteen twenty academic year. Next slide, please. There are many unknowns as it pertains to moving forward when we think about what may happen with us going back to in person learning, but also how we continue as a Durham community and as a country to respond to COVID nineteen. It is our commitment to make sure that we are providing differentiated support based on school needs, prioritizing connections before content, finding new ways to ignite limitless potential in our children and identify problems of practice using our data sources and continue to make data informed decisions while using distributive leadership. We are all in this together, and priority one really shows the cross functionality and the intersection of all of our departments to work together to improve outcomes for our youngsters. At this time, I would just like to acknowledge the goal, the goal leads. I would like to thank them as well as our teachers, our leaders who have really contributed and provided meaningful feedback as we've been working on priority one. We appreciate each of them and their feedback, especially to our students. Um, we had our student, our superintendent students advisory council, and we learned so much from our youngsters as we think about the feedback that they provide. At this time, I will turn it back over to Mr. Sears. The goal team leads and myself are here for any questions and discussion. Thank you again.
Thank you, administration, for that report. Board members, is there discussion at this time? Ms. Amstead.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Hardy, and all the goal team leads that are here. Um, you all in an unprecedented year still are figuring out how, what, how do we move forward with our strategic plan, right? And making sure that academics is still at the forefront of what we are doing. So I just want to appreciate y'all for the work and the quick pivots that you made in March and continue to make every day. I did have a question. I'm wondering about, I know when we created the strategic plan, we had end of year testing, and so we kind of had those benchmarks in place focused on that. We don't know yet what's going to happen for this year, but I'm wondering, are there other ways that you all are considering measuring academic growth for students? Um, considering it could be two years that we don't have those intercourse tests.
I'll go in and start, and I see that Ms. Sidbury has also unmuted herself, um, and Dr. Spencer may have something that she wants to add. Um, I think one of the things that um is critically important is the social and emotional needs of our youngsters. And um, we know that we have a commitment to ensuring that during this time, students do have access to high quality resources and a rigorous academic environment, but none of that matters if we don't take care of their social and emotional needs. And so that has been a priority focus for us. Um, through the adoption of the resources that you have provided, especially in the area of literacy and, and in the area of math, our teachers have the opportunity um to use some of those formative assessments to see how children are progressing towards those grade level standards. We also have our benchmark that we have been using. So we did provide a benchmark at the beginning of the year so we could see where our students were towards mastery of grade level. So we did provide a benchmark at the beginning of the year so we could see where our students were towards mastery of grade-level standards. And we will have administration of that benchmark at the end of the year. So that will also help us determine how students are progressing. We want to make sure that we are providing the flexibility that our teachers need as they are navigating this virtual environment. I think those data points, in addition to the feedback that we're receiving from our counselors, our our social workers, that will help us as we continue to pivot towards in-person learning and provide intervention and other opportunities as we move forward into the end of the year and next summer.
Thank you for that answer and the emphasis on our students' social and emotional well-being right now. We know that that needs to be taken care of first as we think about academics and growth. So I'm glad that we're kind of holding both of those and also focusing, though, on that social and emotional growth. I also just want to comment, I'm glad to see that we're tracking graduate, progress towards graduation this year. That was in the analysis. I think there's a lot of concern. I've heard from community members around, you know, we're doing as much as we can, but like, are we going to make sure we capture every single student? And what does this mean for the future our students are navigating and families are navigating lots of challenging situations with COVID-19? So I'm glad that we're monitoring that and look forward to more conversations about what that looks like. I know that y'all will use the flexibility of the online format to figure out how we make sure students have what they need towards graduation. So I just want to appreciate y'all for that work.
Thank you, Mr. Raven.
First, I like, I like everything that I see. I'm a big supporter of being able to use metrics, especially the quantitative data, to be able to track how we're doing and track the performance. The one thing that I'm wondering is this, I don't know if this is something that we could eventually add into it or maybe on our next strategic plan, we could take a look at it. I was fortunate enough to be invited to a presentation today with Ms. Olstead and Mr. Sears, and we were able to see a presentation by high school students doing work that I think could be considered, you know, college-level work. They're using their laptops, they're creating PowerPoints, they're doing reports, they're doing presentations, and they're working with all with each other virtually. Obviously, that's not something that we were doing when I was in high school. So, you know, I'm wondering, you know, I know some parents will be saying, you know, our kids aren't growing in this area. But how are we going to be able to track the other areas that our kids are now growing in? Because they're literally preparing themselves for the virtual workforce, and they already have a year, you know, year-on-a-job training. So I'm wondering, is there any metric that we could kind of use? Maybe there's one that already exists where we could account for their strengths that they're gaining in that respect as well.
All right, Mr. Raven, I'll say this well noted. As we're getting close to the end of our strategic plan, we're pretty much midway. Few years ago, we used to have a senior project where students will be able to do things and put things together and be able to show at the end of their senior year how much they've been able to learn, whether fixing call or coming with something very creative. So I said, well noted, as we're moving forward, and I will say this, K to twelve education is not going to look the same as it used to be prior to COVID. So we are welcoming all these great ideas, and we'll be able to put them in place probably by 2022 as we'll be finishing up our strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Mubenga and Mr. Raven. And I think that Mr. Hickson and maybe Dr. Pack would might also may have something to add. In Goal 1C, which is our graduation rate goal, Strategy Five talks specifically about increasing our CTE completers. And many of the hands-on experiences that are occurring are an intersection between some of our CTE courses. And so we are trying to not only monitor that, but make sure that our youngsters are getting those experiences that are going to help transition them so that when they graduate, they are enrolled, enlisted, or employed. And when we talk about employment, we want to make sure that they have those employability skills that are transferable to the workplace so that they can be successful. Mr. Hickson or Dr. Pack?
Yeah, the only thing I will add is, as we were talking about in the goal presentation, the IST standards for students are something we are implementing in Durham Public Schools, and we're in early parts of implementation. But what we've done recently is we've sent a group of fellows to go to the IST conference, and we've loaded these standards into Canvas as outcomes that can be predefined and used in rubrics and then measured and collected. We can actually collect data on the implementation of those standards and the use of them in rubrics across our district using Canvas. We're only just scratching the surface of that capability, but we do have the capability, and we've started to put it in place. So I think that's a place where actually, as we move into the spring, we can think about how we're measuring some of these skills, the digital citizenship and the other skills that students are progressing in no doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Hickson, and thank you, Dr. Hardy. I would just add, and thank you, Dr. Hardy, for talking about the intersection of CTE and the and this workplace, future-ready skills that we're so excited to make sure that students have. I would just add that the one other measurement we can look at for that particular piece is credential attainment. Those portable credentials that students can earn in high school, free of charge, go with them into the workplace after they graduate. And so, you know, we, we're providing those opportunities. We're looking forward to expanding those opportunities and looking forward to having some time with students in the spring to get them ready for those certifications.
Ms. Fayer Aras.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hardy, for this presentation. You know, I am super grateful for the goals and especially the strategic plan that has the graduation rates. And I just, you know, was looking at the coaches, the graduation coaches that we just mentioned. That is, that is something that I am very grateful for. I would like to have a little more information. I know in the past, we have collaborated with the College Advising Corporation, CAC, many different great collaborations. Some schools have had it. Not all schools have had like a graduation coach, you know, or somebody of that, in that role in the building. And so when it comes to our, all our schools, I'm just wondering what, what that's going to look like in terms of like the graduation coaches? Are they going to be centralized? Are they going to be at each school assigned? I mean, any information that you can provide on that?
I'll start, and then I will ask Dr. Maddox Perry. I know she was having some, I'm trying to see. I've got too many screens up. Oh, there she is. She was able to join back. Thank you so much for lifting up the graduation coaches because one of the things, that partnership with our school counselors is so important. In addition, we also have some graduation coaches that are part of our ESL department that are working specifically with students who may be identified as limited English proficient. We know that it takes, it really does take a community to ensure that we're providing multiple opportunities. When you look at the data, I mentioned some successes, but there are still some opportunities. We do want to be laser-focused on those opportunities so that we can get to the place where, when we're talking about ninety percent graduation rate, that's for each and every subgroup. So I'll allow Dr. Maddox Perry to speak more specific to, to some of the College Advising Core partnerships that we've had.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, Dr. Mubenga, Dr. Hardy, thank you. Yes, so we are really proud of our partnerships, as you said, with College Advising Core. We do work in conjunction with our ESL department to make sure our counselors and our other student support services are collaborating completely with our graduation coaches in the high schools. We have partnerships with UNC and Duke at all of our comprehensive high schools and at CMA as well. So we're hoping to increase those. We also have partnerships with Emily Kay that provides graduation coaching and career counseling for our students in our high schools. So we're always looking for the opportunities to increase those partnerships, and we feel really good about the ones that we have providing our students with those sound strategies that they can use and supports.
I have a follow-up question. During this time, I am aware of many families, many youth that are working. Many of our youth high school students have taken on jobs. And I, I love hearing about the Evening Academy, you know, and how that, that's, you know, available to them. I wonder, can you tell us a little more about the Evening Academy, especially as we think about families that are going through financial strains during this time and kids are actually, you know, out working?
Yes, I'm going to turn that right over to Dr. Maddox Perry.
Thank you again, Dr. Hardy. So Evening Academy has been a part of our supports for the third year, as we said in the presentation. But what's unique about this year is that it is an opportunity not just for students who are traditionally, what we call, undercredited and overaged, it's also an opportunity for those students who are in situations, just like you mentioned, during our remote learning. We now have an opportunity to allow students to continue matriculation and their courses without so much of a chance to participate in the synchronous learning. So for those students who are having difficulty with that because of life's challenges, there is an opportunity to continue matriculation without missing a beat by Evening Academy. So we've started that a bit early. We're still enrolling students. It's still an opportunity if students are watching and they have not yet taken advantage of that, that's still possible. So we're always thinking of new ways to use it. We're not quite sure how we're going to expand it for the spring, but we're thinking about new opportunities to make it even more accessible.
And my last, my last question. When it comes to metrics and as we are tracking, you know, every year, we, we see the segregated data of where our students, how they're performing across the state. And I know that this is, this is a question that, that was asked recently, and I thank Chip so much and Dr. Hardy and all of you for, for looking into these answers, but I want the community to hear this. So Department of Public Instruction should be giving us the updated data. When, when, in February, what, what can we expect, I guess, February or March, when these numbers come out in terms of? Can you tell us just a little bit about that? Because I think a lot of people are looking for these numbers, and I know these are not standard times. These are challenging times, but.
So I will, I will start, and if Dr. Spencer wants to add. We are, we work very closely with the Department of Public Instruction in terms of when those data release times will occur. And so our dropout data will be released in January or February. It does have to be approved by our state board, and then when that occurs, there is a, usually there's a state release, and then each school district across the state will also release that data. Before I turn it over to Dr. Spencer, just to summarize, because I do want to make sure that, that our community is aware that graduation is something that's really, really important to us. We know that that is, you know, our children are so proud. And when you think about when we have the opportunity to attend graduation, whether it is in large venues that we had pre-COVID or even our drive-through ceremonies, how proud we are of our youngsters and to see their families there celebrating with them. We really do have a multifaceted approach. So our ESL department does provide ESL graduation coaches that are accessible to every high school. We have partnerships with the College Advising Core and the Emily Kay Center for graduation coaches that are at our comprehensive high schools that work in partnership with our counselors. We also ensure that we have our school counselors and our social workers that are working closely. And each and every Student Services Team has identified students that may be undercredited, overaged, or off cohort. And they, we are working specifically with those youngsters to provide opportunities such as Evening Academy. So it really is a multi-pronged approach to ensure that we can get each and every child through graduation with their cohort. And when they graduate, that they are enlisted, that they are employed, or they are enrolled so that they have the opportunity to really contribute, not only to their own well-being, but contribute back to the Durham community. Dr. Spencer, do you have anything to add in relation to the data release that might be forthcoming in January or February?
No, you're exactly right. We wait, we will await the state's release of that, and then we will be providing much more information in terms of the details of Durham's data specifically. I would just add that just because we're waiting on the state doesn't mean that we're not working with students and know our data and continue to track and monitor and work with students. So that is ongoing. We are not waiting for a release for that. And, and Dr. Hardy, you outlined a number of interventions. I cannot say enough about our Student Services and curriculum and instruction folks that this has become a very, very focused area for us. And I think that our data is definitely going to reflect the hard work. So I look forward to sharing it.
Ms. Fayer.
Dr. Hardy, I wanted to thank you and this whole team. You've got this team of rock stars here that have been working hard, acting like we're not in a pandemic, but knowing that we are in a pandemic. And, and such powerhouse players working on behalf of our students. Knowing that we are in a pandemic, though, and knowing that this pandemic is disproportionately impacting students, and these are largely our students of color in our community. I've seen some information from other districts about students that aren't doing well. And, and I think it's really important for us to be honest and, and say that we know that some families and students are really struggling. And I'm wondering if we can go ahead and share in the coming weeks attendance data and say, look, we're struggling. And share some of the grades that students are doing and struggling with. Just be transparent with our community as we go forward. And then maybe be clear with students and parents, here's some of the resources that you guys have at your disposal. Because I don't think we always communicate the ways to connect and, and all the amazing supports that you guys do have in place. So making sure that, that our families know we're with you in partnership, and here's who you can call, I think would be super helpful, especially as it looks like we're turning the corner on a time when rates are going in the wrong direction, when everyone is a new level of tired with this. So I just look forward to, to ways that we can continue just to be honest with our community and, and to actually say, if, if you're not able to reach your teacher, if, because you know your teacher's working really hard behind that Zoom screen every day with more children than they should have to manage on a Zoom screen, here's some other resources and people and places and ways we can connect you and connect your child to supports. And I know, I know there's so much that y'all have done. I just want us to make sure to communicate it well with our families and be transparent with the community about a lot of kids not showing up. And here's what we're doing to go get them. And if your kid's not showing up, here's who you can call so we can help go get your kid engaged again. We're doing relational things just through the, through virtual means.
Thank you for that, Ms. Fayer. And in our Plan B, we're going to talk a little bit about some strategies for two-way communication. And so I'm going to hold a little bit of that until that presentation, but well noted. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hardy. That was for information. Board members, any further discussion? All right, thank you so much. We will, if I can get to the right screen, move to Item 8B, Durham Health Department Data Update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sears. Ms. Smith, if you could please pull up the presentation that was submitted by Ms. Thompson. Board members, we have Susan Thompson here, who is one of the lead nurses with the Durham County Health Department and has been a partner with Durham Public Schools and also serves many of our schools. This evening, she is going to provide a COVID-19 Durham data update. I would like to note for the public and for our board members, what you will see in our board materials are, is data that is a handful of weeks old. Know that because we submit and post board materials early, the most recent data is not able to be submitted and posted on our website. However, we're going to go through so that you'll be able to see some of the historic information from the past few weeks. But also, Ms. Thompson is going to provide you with the most up-to-date data regarding positivity as well as data according to zip codes in Durham County. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Dr. Hardy. You're right in saying this, this information is a week old, and there have been changes, which I'll share with you as we go through the slides. Could you, first slide, please? Thank you. Thank you. I believe our current active cases today was over, well over 600, approaching 700. And we are over 12,000 total cases as of today. Next slide. This is something we've been tracking, as you can see, since July. And the red line is a seven-day moving average of all the confirmed cases. The green line is daily confirmed cases. At this time, I think the seven-day moving average was about 80. As of yesterday, the seven-day moving average was 112. And yesterday, the number of daily confirmed cases that we, we got was 142. I had to adjust this graph. At one time, the highest metric was 120. I had to extend it to 160 because the number of cases we're getting continues to increase. Next slide. This is the percentage of positive tests weekly. The blue line is 4%. That is, that is the metric that we're, that we're monitoring, based on what was requested by the board. The red line is the percent of positive tests. It, it's, I believe, last week at this time, it was, it should have been about 5.3. I think it's not maybe indicated, but this week it is 6.3. And again, that is increasing also. And we're seeing more, more people being tested also. The rate is going up. Next slide. This is the risk level. You can see at one point, this, this measures case incidence and it has to do with, based on the daily number of new cases. This is based on 100,000 population. We had gotten down into the yellow, but you can see we are in the red. And actually, when I created the slide, we were just into the red. And this week, we were well into the red with, you see, the red is greater than 25 daily cases per 100,000. Our rate was almost 30. I believe it was 29.89. So we are well into the red. And next slide. This is a new metric that the state has developed. It's called the COVID County Alert System. If you go to the NCDHHS, there's a data dashboard and they update this every other week. At the time this was posted on that site, you see, if you can find Durham, it was yellow. This week, it is orange, which is sort of the brownish color. This metric, there are three metrics that they follow, the state looks at. They look at every county. And if you go to this site, you can again, find any county and see where they, what their metrics are, what their positivity rate is for tests, and what their number of new cases are. They do, because it's every other week, they follow a 14-day average. They look at the case rate in each county. They look at the percent of positive tests. And they also look at the hospital impact, which is a different scores based on hospitalizations, the percent of COVID hospitalizations, and COVID-related visits to the emergency department. They look at open hospital beds and critical staffing shortages. So all those together create a very good picture. And the, if you will, look on the current slide, I believe a majority of counties are in the red now. So it's a very dramatic shift from this last week to the current one, if you'd like to, to look and find that. I believe that's the last slide, but Dr. Hardy did mention zip codes. We've seen ongoingly that the zip code in Durham that has the highest rates is 27704, and that has not changed. Those rates continue to increase. I believe it's 51 was the rate the last time I looked, which was yesterday. So again, summary, as we all know, everything's going up, cases are increasing. It's really getting to a point that it's not overwhelming yet, but it's very close, close to that as the cases come in and people continue to see, they, they are symptomatic, they're getting tested. And of course, as you see in the news, a lot of it's related to gatherings. And it's, the thought is that after Thanksgiving, people were together then and we're seeing the effect of that. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Nurse Thompson. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Sears to see if we have any questions. We also have our school district lead nurse on the call, Nurse Tricia Howard.
Long ago. But thank you for this information. This is very important as we consider the possibility of going back in January. This is a, you know, this is all over the news. There's no surprise here. My question is more logistics-wise. I know that the spike happened, a lot of, a lot of pundits, if you will, are saying that the spike happened because of Thanksgiving, gathered and so forth. I'm suspecting the same thing would be happening over Christmas, for the Christmas holiday. And we would see even a greater spike there. So my question is, I don't know if it's a question, but I'm guessing that, you know, there's an expectation that, you know, there's going to be a peak and then because of the holidays, you know, because of gatherings, and event, these numbers will eventually go down at some point. I wouldn't, to be honest, I wouldn't suspect that we would see much of a decrease by the time we were set to make a decision on January 7. When you look at these numbers, and I'm sorry, I lost her off of my screen here. Oh, Ms. Thompson, when you look at these numbers, when you look at trends, what are the things that you, you would expect to see with these trend numbers? As we, the further we get from Thanksgiving, I'm sure it's going to go down a little bit. I guess that's probably just because of the distant, you know, the 14-day distance and so forth. What can we expect here now? I can't, I was starting to think about the question, is there, is there a way to look at these graphs to see if things are actually improving? Because according to your, the daily cases and the seven-day movement average, it's all over the place, right? It'd be low on one day, be extremely high on another, and so forth. When you and other healthcare professionals look at these graphs and these numbers, what is that you're looking for to know if, if things are improving? And what factors kind of factor into that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Lee. The graph, the confirmed cases, I think it's the first graph you see. The, the important line there is the red line, which is the seven-day moving average, which you see is continuing to creep upwards. And that's very, that's what we look at. Because you're right, the case is wax and wane. It depends on when labs feed into our electronic system and various other things. But that seven-day moving average is continuing to increase. And we suspect it will continue to do so. As you said, there may be a dip. But if you look at what's happened after Thanksgiving, and again, as you say, what the pundits predict after Christmas, about the time school would be resuming around the 18th or 21st of January, might be about the time there's another peak, given the 14-day incubation period and travel and things like that. We look at that. We look at the positivity rate, which is also increasing. You'll see, if you look at that COVID alert, county alert system, there are many counties that have very, very high positivity rates in different areas of the states. So you look at Durham's and it doesn't look too bad, but it is 6% and climbing. So that's another thing we keep a close eye on.
Okay. 911 27704. So if anybody is in 27704 and watching this, please stay at home, wear a mask, do whatever it takes. Let's try to get our zip code off of this, the, the high list, please. Thank you.
And if I could, I work on the COVID hotline. I was reassigned, I'm a school nurse, public health school nurse, but we were all assigned COVID duties at the health department. And I do work the COVID hotline every day. And we get calls from people who are amazed to learn that they have tested positive. And they will say, I have socially distanced, I've done what I'm supposed to do, you know, what's going on. And it's, we, we educate every day about the importance that, that, you know, COVID is out there, it is possible for you to get it. And that is why it's so important to wear your mask, keep your distance. And we see it, we've seen an increase in calls from businesses, schools, healthcare, daycares, just families from family gatherings across the board. And it's, it's rather striking, the number of calls and the amount of amazement in people when they do get it. They don't understand how that could happen. So there's still so much education to be done in the community for people to understand how important it really is to, as I sound like Mandy Cohen, the three Ws, wear your mask, you know, keep your distance and wash your hands. It's so important.
Other questions? Ms. Vayadharas?
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. I'm, I'm really grateful to, to have you here, especially to, you know, talk about the, the data. A lot of folks want to know where to look. I know that, you know, the numbers, as we talked today, you know, there's lag time because the board materials and day by day. If folks want to keep track, there's, there's multiple areas where they can go, like, you know, the Durham County has the coronavirus data hub. There's the Department of Health and Human Services. Can you tell us a little bit more about what's available for families who want to stay informed? Where to go? What are the options?
I think those, those two sites are the best, I think, for Durham County because rather than focusing on national data or things that aren't maybe as pertinent, the Durham County data is what's important, I think. And the state, North Carolina DHHS, provides individual county information. You can drill down on what they provide. And of course, the health department's website is strictly Durham County and provides a wealth of information, not only about the data, but test sites, support services, and other information that, that families are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Also, you had mentioned that people were calling in a call center surprised that they had contracted the disease. Is there, with contact tracing, is there evidence of where spread is happening, more so than not?
The primary spread, of course, is, is person to person in spread. And there, it seems to be events. I had a call the other day about a woman who's, I shared this with Trish Howard, the nurse for DPS, four months pregnant, a woman that's planning to go to a friend's wedding to the, both the, the service and the reception. And was that a good idea? And I was like, well, so you have to share the information and explain and hope they understand that that is a high-risk event. But we get calls, again, I got a call, there's a bowling tournament going to be held in Durham. It's this dichotomy of people going ahead with their lives and doing what they want and then being surprised sometimes by getting COVID. There's also misunderstanding about contacts and, and what that means and how you get it, maybe. And if you think every active case, each case, one case may have 100 contacts, it, it varies with the case. So that's an enormous, you know, burden to follow. And that, and the Durham County Health Department is, is one that not only calls all the active cases, but there's also contact of the contacts. Not every health department does that, but Durham has chosen to do so. And that's very important because every call is an opportunity to educate. And that's what's going on constantly, but it's, you know, we still need more. The message needs to be out there.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for this.
Thank you for asking.
Board members or administration, any additional questions tonight?
I have questions.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Nurse Thompson, for coming and sharing that data. Similar to what Board Member Vayadaras asked, I've had people ask me about, on the public health site, they wanted to track the positivity rate for themselves. Can you tell me a little bit about how often you all are updating your site? It looks like the infographic now has, is a little, a couple weeks, November 30th.
The site is updated daily in terms of the number of daily cases and the seven-day moving average. The, the positivity testing, I believe, is updated weekly. And then there's usually a summary that looks at a lot of data and a lot of measures, and it also explains a bit about it. And it looks as things as COVID by occupation. And you can track, you know, at one point, it was restaurant workers and things. Now it's actually affecting healthcare workers. If you look, you can see that information. Who, who, who is testing positive and what's the percent in our community? So that is provided weekly. There's a weekly, a very thorough summary that's provided weekly. The number of cases, again, is daily. The positivity rate is weekly, but you can look at that also on the DHHS site, the positivity rate and see that. But it's actually, the health department's site is updated fairly regularly, is current information.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then I just, I think I dropped out, so I might have missed the end of Mike's question. So if I'm repeating it, please just tell me that I repeated it. But I know there's a new governor's order out, a new stay-at-home order. I think there's increased mask update around wearing a mask when you are not in, with people who are not in your household. So I just want to know, we have an audience, if there's any information that you can share with people at home. This is a community effort, right? It can't just be one person. That has to be all of us doing our part to slow the spread of the virus. So you could highlight some of that new information. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. The governor's, I think it was Executive Order 180 stressed the importance of mask wearing and was more directive in terms of who should wear a mask. There are very few exceptions to mask wearing. And it's certainly encouraged. We get calls from concerned citizens who are reporting businesses and actually neighbors and others who aren't following the, the guidelines. And we applaud them for being good citizens and making those calls. And we do call the police and they do check it out and they do educate those people. So again, we're pleased that citizens are, are concerned enough to give us a call. In terms of the guidance that starts tomorrow, it's the stay-at-home, I guess you called it, stay-at-home from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And there's other restrictions on alcohol sales stop at 9:00. And that, too, is designed to hopefully bring some reductions in what we see in terms of the case counts and the positivity rate. As people suspected, the bed utilization is, is also increasing, which is of some concern. If you have too many beds for COVID, you don't have those beds for people who might need them in the ER if they go with a heart attack or injury. So that's very concerning. But I can't stress education enough. In every way, every day, everyone should be educating everyone. The message can't be repeated enough. And again, I know people get tired of the three Ws, but that really doesn't work. And when people, it seems to dawn on them when they make these calls, they're like, but how do I know I'm not going to get it? And you say, well, that's why you wear masks and that's why you keep your distance. And that's why you wash your hands and are mindful of all those things. And then you can see it kind of connect and they're like, oh, okay. So it seems like once people understand it, they get it. But sometimes it has to be repeated many times before it sinks in. Because just, you, your educators, you know, you work with teenagers and they never think they're going to get STDs. They know all about them, but they don't think they're going to get them. It's, it's kind of the same. They, people know COVID's out there, they know how it spreads, but somehow they don't think they're going to get it. And of course, anyone can get it. So I appreciate your question and encourage everyone, we're all educators every day, and to spread the message anywhere and everywhere so people understand. and to spread the message anywhere and everywhere so people understand. Thank you.
Mr. Raven?
I, I do have one question. I, I know I've read a lot of research on areas that they are saying are kind of like super-spreader locations, but that's just what I read. I'm wondering from a, a health, um, practitioner's perspective, are there any specific areas that, I guess, healthcare workers try to at least inform, um, you know, regular residents of a community, areas that you could avoid because they may have? Um, there, there's a correlation that infection rates are linked to being in certain areas. Is there anything else like that?
From, from what we see at the health department, um, any place that's not following those control measures certainly places themself at risk. And of course, the, the greater number of people you have in a, in an area and the greater number of people who are not following those guid- guidelines, um, you're, you're gonna get cases. And then if, again, if you're not following those guidelines, you have one case in any facility in any place. It can, it will spread, it will spread. Because again, we've gotten calls from multiple agencies, venues, um, events in which there are several cases that started, obviously, with one and it became more.
Ms. Byer?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Nurse Thompson, and thank you, Nurse Howard, for all the work that you all do as health professionals. Thank you, Nurse Thompson, for your Christmas tree. It's bringing some cheer into our Zoom tonight. And you're bringing such gloomy news. Um, I didn't see anything about hospitalizations and I wondered if you had any insight. The, the New York Times had a, has a tracker now that says that Durham's ICU occupancy is at 97%. And that alarmed me. And I don't know if that's because we have a regional medical center and have a lot of out-of-county hospitalizations? And are you, have, have you heard that we have additional capacity that's not reflected in that? Or is that something that y'all are tracking as well?
Well, the health department doesn't track that. Specifically, I heard the same report, I think, as you. And the, at UNC, it's, the numbers are similar. And, um, it is alarming. Uh, Wake Med, all of our facilities are, um, the bed capacities are decreasing. You know, the beds are full. And again, we don't track that so much at the health department. But, uh, if you look at the state, the DHHS, and listen to Dr. Cohen, who tracks all the major medical centers, it is alarming. And again, if you look at that COVID county alert system, that does look at that hospital metric and the impact, you can see how many counties are, um, very adversely affected, especially the small counties who maybe don't have as many hospital beds. And you can quickly see how the problem could, could get very serious very fast.
One of the areas, um, that North Carolina has also lagged is having enough contact tracers. Do you, can you at least tell us how many we have for Durham and how hard they're all working? Last I heard, it was six days a week, kind of thing.
Yes, yes. Uh, the number is changing because we are continuing to add people and I believe there's even more coming. So I, I can't give you an exact number, I'm sorry. But everyone is working six days a week. That is the investigators and the contact tracers. Of course, the hotline is operational. At one point, the, the whole health department was devoted to this effort. And we've certainly gotten help in the form of the contact tracers and other staff who have been brought in to help. But the days, it's still overwhelming to try to stay ahead, just like trying to stay ahead of the wave. You know, it's coming.
And if people gathered over Thanksgiving and/or have, have risked, we still do have a lot of free testing in the area. And I, I hope that people will understand that and call the hotline and find out where that's available near you. Because, um, I think it's still the best recommendation, um, to get tested if there's any chance of exposure.
Yes, yes. And there's one number, which if I may, I'll give it to you. There's an, there's one company that tests in numerous sites in Durham that's free testing. And the number is 877-562-4850. We give that out regularly on the hotline. But we're glad that people are calling and want to be tested.
Fantastic, 877-562-4850. We have given that out a few times. Thank you for sharing that with our families. I saw a lot of confusion after our meeting and I wanted to make sure that we're clear. And I don't know if it's for our health professionals or for Dr. Mavenga. People are wondering what 4% we're tracking and where. I don't know, Board members, have you seen that specific question on, a lot? Is that on the Durham website? Is that on the North Carolina website? Where are we tracking, where we're looking for 4%? So that we're being consistent and our teachers and, and families can know what numbers we're looking at, since it does lag a little bit.
I don't know if I'm supposed to answer that, but, uh, you know, that, that information is on the health department website. There is a little lag, as you say, but my understanding, and correct me, and Trish can also, my understanding that it was, we, we have always tracked the positivity rate. And, uh, the World Health Organization gives five. They would like it to be below five, preferably zero, but at least below five. And my understanding was that the board had asked that they would like to see it two consecutive weeks that the rate would be below 4%. And that would, of course, be in Durham County. If I understood it correctly. Yes? Okay.
Mrs. Byers? Could you restate the question? I just want to clarify it too, because I'll go back and take a look at exactly how the motion was phrased. But what is the question that you're getting from the community?
The, the, the numbers are different in different places that people look. And so whether they look at the North Carolina Health and Human Services site, whether they look at the Durham County site, we had talked at one point about how we're a region and there, we have porous boundaries between Wake County and Orange County and Durham. So there was just, which number is the district watching is, is what people want to know. And I don't know if we want to put that on our website at some point, here's what we're watching and here's where it is this week. I mean, you know, I don't know.
So I will say, as the, the lead nurse, I get all my information from the health department, from the Durham County's health department. And I, and I make sure that pretty much I'm getting it from Susan every week, um, so that we do have consistency.
And, uh, and we have our meeting, January 7th. It will be with the Durham County Health Department as well to get that data. So we'll be tracking it with, with the health department. Dr. Mavenga, did you have anything to add on that question?
No, wait, I just want to echo what you said. We know Susan Thompson has been really wonderful joining us. And I'm gonna try my best to bring, uh, the director of our health departments as well to join us.
Ms. Fajadaris?
Thank you so much. There was also a question as a follow-up, um, you know, rolling average versus moving average. Um, and, you know, that was definitely something else that community members wanted to know. Um, and, um, I just wanted to mention something that I, I really appreciated, uh, Nurse Thompson, when you were talking about education being something that we really need to prioritize. Um, there's a lot of efforts right now in the community, the city and the county, um, have been working with, um, uh, establishing, uh, community-based organizations have been working to empower and train community members to become community health workers. And I think that, um, as we talk about contact tracers being limited, we have limited contact tracers. Right now, there are folks, like there are DPS parents that have been trained, that are talking to other parents about, like, wearing the mask, social distancing, washing hands. But even beyond that, you know, uh, what to do? You know, what to do if you think that you have been exposed? And what does that exposure look like? All these conversations that are so important, um, for everybody to be aware. And so that's something that, um, I, I just wanted to uplift, uh, the number of parents, the number of volunteers, the number of folks who are out there in communities, the, the number of people who look like the people that they want to give the message to. That's very important, too, you know, where the message is coming from, um, and how we can all do our part to ensure that these rates, uh, decrease. But, um, just going back to that question, the rolling versus moving, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, the, um, the averages?
We can't hear you, Ms. Thompson.
I was gonna say, it's, it's statistics, which isn't my strong point. But for, I think for our purposes in, in the health department, we focus more on that, uh, seven-day, um, moving average. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost the same thing. It's a cumulative, as it moves along, every day is different. And it's a, you add the seven days prior and get your number. And that then figures into the calculation that comes up with the, uh, case incidence rate. So you use both those numbers. I don't know if that's answering your question, but...
Yeah, the, the, just what are we gonna use? And I guess, like, I'm sorry that I directed it to you, but, um, that was definitely something that, that folks would want to see. You know, just seconding, um, what Ms. Byers is saying, you know, um, to kind of have that specified, but thank you.
The importance of that number is it helps, um, you can calculate the, the incidence rate, which is the number of new cases, which is important in, uh, in the community. What is your insta- incident, which is again, what currently is putting us in the red zone in that 100,000 population calculation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Board members or staff, any additional questions? And Ms. Thompson, we thank you for being here. Really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to item 8C, Plan B update. Dr. Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Ms. Smith, if you could, please pull up our Plan B reopening presentation. Thank you, Ms. Smith. If you'll go forward one slide. Tonight, I'm going to, this presentation has a couple of components. We're gonna start with, uh, Plan B overview and speak to some of our communication. We will talk about our data dashboard, um, just hearing our COVID data update from, um, Nurse Thompson. And Dr. Spencer, may assist me if you have any questions, um, regarding our, our data dashboard. And then we are going to talk about our learning centers. This is before you this evening, um, for action. Um, and the action area is specifically regarding our learning centers. If you'll go to the next slide, please. As we transition into second semester and continue to provide support for moving towards Plan B, we know that this is an important moment for us to promote communication and re-engagement with our community. With this goal in mind, we have developed a cross-functional district team focused on communicating Plan B options to families and ensuring that every family have the opportunity to make an informed choice. This team includes representatives from our multilingual resource center, research and accountability, online learning, human resources and public affairs. The Plan B communications team is supporting our elementary schools with performing a district-wide canvas of all of our families. We know families who are currently disconnected and many students who are most vulnerable to learning loss might have a more difficult time locating and completing an online form. In response, we have a coordinated plan to engage in two-way communication so that all families can have the opportunity to express their preference to remain in a virtual learning or to opt in to in-person learn, in-person learning this spring. We believe that we can use this particular model, um, that we have developed for Plan B, specific to our elementary families at this time, to also re-engage our secondary students in remote learning and gather feedback from families about their needs. Next slide, please. The Plan B communication team has identified four components of our communication plan that allow schools and central services to work collaboratively to raise response rates and to ensure language access. Schools have received a toolkit that outlines how families express their preference for learning in the spring of 2021, how they are to contact families, and a sample script that they can use with their staff. In addition, schools have also received a live data dashboard showing them exactly which families have expressed a preference already and which families still need to be contacted to ensure equity of access for this particular choice. At the central office level, we are providing a bilingual, we are providing bilingual drop-in hours for families to safely get support and filling out the survey, as well as utilizing our multilingual resource center and social workers to follow up with hard-to-reach families. These elements will work together to ensure a high response rate. We launched this, um, this toolkit last week. And in less than a week since our launch of our spring learning preference form, we are at 54%. 54% of our families have already responded to indicate their preference to either opt into in-person learning or to remain virtual. Our schools are making hundreds of calls each day to follow up with our families. We have seen the response rate rise from just over 30% to 54% since Monday. We have a couple of schools to, to shout out. Burton, C.C.S. Falding and Forest View have led the way, all with right now over a 70% response rate. We are going to continue until December 18th, working with our schools to ensure a full canvas of our families. And it is our goal to get to 100%. Next slide, please. We launched this on December 3rd, when all families could go online and fill out the Spring 2020 Learning Preference Form. Families who have not already completed the IGNITE survey are expected to complete this form. The Spring Learning Preference Form for families will indicate if they would like to participate in in-person learning or to indicate their plan to remain in virtual learning. It will remain at dpsnc.net and will remain open until December 18th. As mentioned, this week, our schools have started the canvas process and they are calling families with a team and they are checking their dashboard to ensure that they identify the families that have not yet expressed their preference. We aim to finish up our school-based calling by December 18th, when we will pick up support from our multilingual resource center and social workers to really work to reach all of our hard-to-reach families and to continue receiving contacts with the opportunity to register their preference. We will provide an update as needed per the board. Next slide, please, and you can go forward two slides. Next, um, we would like to provide an update regarding our, our data dashboards. We have just heard an update from Nurse Thompson from the Durham County Health Department. As mentioned at our previous board meeting, we have established two different dashboards from our community. These dashboards will be updated every week and available every Monday by the close of business on the DPS website. And they are available in both English and Spanish. Although the dashboards are quite comprehensive, they do not include all data points. But however, it does provide data points to help inform decisions by the board as they, um, are looking towards in-person learning. This is a holistic view of the data that we have collected. Next slide, please. The COVID-19 Health Dashboard provides a weekly snapshot of student and staff cases. The staff number includes an estimation of staff who are on-site, as well as students who are regularly on-site. So what you will see is the data dashboard that was updated through November 27th. I have, um, the data dashboard for the most previous week, um, November 29th through December 5th. I have that dashboard, I printed it so that I would have it in front of me. Some of the differences that you will note from the dashboard that you were seeing on your screen, we did have one new positive student case, so that changed that percentage to 0.2. We had, um, and that says five new positive student cases. We are now, we were now at seven positives staff, excuse me, staff cases, which is 0.4%. And this is updated on our website. So you will be able to see, if you go to our website right now, you will see the one that is on your screen. You will also see the one that I just referenced, which is November 29th through December 5th. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Also, when you click on the slide that you just saw, you will be able to see to click here for full details. And this is what you can see. You will be able to see this by sight. And you can see this is through, from October. Next slide, please. This is now our readiness dashboard. And what you will see on our readiness dashboard is it provides a way for us to look at multiple sources of data. And you will see over the next three slides as we go through this particular dashboard. This is again from November 23rd to November 27th. As we go through this, what I will do is I will share any changes that we have based on the November 29th that I have printed. I have that right in front of me. It is also available on our website. The November 29th through December 5th, there are no changes in what you see on the screen from November 23rd to November 27th. If you'll go to the next slide, please. On the next slide, what you will see is the first metric in terms of cases at site. We are still at, oop, if you'll go back, I apologize, Ms. Smith. We are still at moderate readiness. In terms of the next two component site clusters, we are still at substantial readiness. However, on the next one, we are at, we are now in the moderate readiness site in terms of individuals in active quarantine. So that last on the top tier, that last row is now in the yellow. At the bottom tier on this particular site, on this particular screen, there are no changes in our updated dashboard. We are green, yes and yes on the first two. And we are in red on the last two. If you'll go to the next slide, Ms. Smith. And there are no changes on our most updated readiness dashboard than the changes than what you see on the screen. Gonna pause at this time before we go into our learning centers to see if Dr. Spencer or Nurse Howard have anything to add in reference to our dashboard and to take any questions that we have from the board before we go into our learning centers.
Great job. Your data presentation, all of it is right on point. I have to say that there are a number of people who are very involved in this. So from operations to HR to Nurse Howard, it is the input and data from multiple sources and that we collect that on a weekly basis. I would like to point out to the question that was in our previous presentation around positivity rate. This is another location. The readiness dashboard, that very first question gives the range of a green, yellow, red in terms of the positivity. So green being that that is less than the 4O positivity rate that we are all looking for. So I, great job. We will continue to update that and continue to hopefully also make improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Spencer. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Sears, to see if there are any questions before we transition to our learning centers.
Board members. Ms. Byer.
I want to thank you all so much for the work on this dashboard. I know it is tedious, but it is so, so, so important and so important for our community to understand kind of where cases are in our schools without them even being open yet. I wanted to discuss a little bit about some of the metrics that you picked and how you chose. I know how you picked the 4% on the test positivity rate. But how did you, how did you put it up at 10% as a cap that would have it in the yellow zone when CDC calls a moderate risk 5% to 8%? How did you all choose to do that metric differently than CDC?
One of the ways would be looking at the metrics of other districts and the work across the board. And so I would say from top to bottom of dashboard, that is exactly how it happened. And then we made adjustments in terms of what we in Durham Public Schools thought that we could manage in different levels of minimal, substantial, moderate. And so that is certainly something that could be explored if we don't think that that is accurate portrayal. But that is exactly where it came from.
I appreciate it. And the other thing that stands out to me is on the sites with cases. That moderate indicator of having 10 to 50 sites with active cases and sites with quarantined people, that seems a high level. I mean, we can sit at green with 10 or more schools, but that 10 to 50 means almost our entire district is in that thing. But still, we're operating in a yellow metric there. I question whether that moderate readiness, you know, threshold needs to be lower on that one. But I leave it to you all to discuss and figure out as we proceed.
I think one of the things that, for that one, I think of it as one bit of the information. I think that particular item has to be looked at in connection with the ones related to clusters as well as the one about the number, the one that's called cases at a site, which is numbers of individuals at a specific site. So it's one thing to have one student at one school versus looking at more than one. So even looking at the moderate is go straight to two. So I think that it is important to recognize that the, that none of these can be looked at in isolation. So that is definitely one that when I look at, I partner it right with the one that's cases at a site to see the magnitude of that. And I would also, Nurse Howard, if you have other thoughts on that. I don't, I am not a health professional, but that is, that is my practical usage of the metrics.
Absolutely. And I think that the point being to collect that data to catch, let's say, a precluster for us to kind of see if we're at a place where we could start worrying about epilinks cases, right? So the whole point is for our 50-something school district, we could have multiple places having multiple pop-ups. And that you're capturing that, that you don't have one school that has X amount of positivity rate and miss that there's also another school that potentially. So if you have three schools with multiple cases, then you're capturing that within the district.
And then just finally, did you all have discussion about including a number of new cases per 100,000 like the CDC does? And is there a reason that we don't include that metric? Or am I missing it on there?
So from my understanding of that, Ms. Bear, I think we were going more by what the Health Department's metric is in their positive positivity rate and not because we are a subset of the positivity rate for Durham. We wouldn't necessarily create our own metric along that line. So we're just pulling, these people would be in the Health Department's numbers. So rather than creating a whole subset of numbers, we're just pulling that and just counting the number of positive cases as opposed to a positivity rate. Was that your question?
No, I assume when we're talking test positivity percentage on that metric that we're, that's Durham County's, as we just talked about a minute ago. But the CDC also tracks and recommends the number of new cases per 100,000 and that being within your community for a lower risk in the green to be a number that's ideally less than five, but between 5 and 20. And I think Nurse Thompson said that our number in Durham right now, and that is, oh, so many numbers. It's not good. So 112, is that where we are on cases per 100,000?
Well, the risk, the risk scale with the green, yellow, red, that, I mean, it depends on which one you're talking about. The Harvard risk scale, we're, that's greater than 25 for 100,000, and we're at 29. And then the seven-day, I think the 112 was our seven-day average of confirmed cases.
I just wonder if we would consider, you know, including that community metric as well going forward as something to watch and monitor. I, you know, but thank you all so much for your work on this, so.
Board members, staff. Ms. Thompson.
There were a couple of metrics on the dashboard that we were in the red around, and I just wanted to hear a little bit about that and if there's any thoughts about how we are there, why we got there, and then what we're doing moving forward.
I'll start with the operational pieces. Most of ours are related to staffing and custodial services. As you recall, we brought that to the board and getting approval for as close to $800,000 to begin that hiring process. And we've been working with Human Resources to do that. The other areas around HVAC ventilation as well as PPE and supplies and things like that, as we said, whenever we first introduced the dashboard, that will continue to move towards green as we receive those things. And so that's what we would anticipate. We should start receiving the HVAC filters this month with all of them being here by January 8th is the time that we receive from the supplier. PPEs, we had a biz about three weeks ago. We expect to receive those PPE. The PPE items actually that's reflected up here are actually in our schools now. We did receive additional PPE requests after we met with both DAE, some of our EC and pre-K teachers. Those are the items that we did bid out and those should be here in the next couple of weeks. And then the health and safety training, we have it out right now on Safe School. So anyone who's a part of our organization should have been receiving emails to do safe school training. And so I would like to take this opportunity to remind folks that even though you're not in school, you may be doing remote, that we still need you to complete your Safe Schools training so that whenever we return back, people know how to conduct themselves accordingly. With that, I turn it back over to Dr. Hardy. She has something that she wants to point out.
The other item that is in red is in reference to our school nurses. Our current staffing, we have seven Durham Public Schools nurses. And then we have 12 Health Department nurses that are assigned to DPS. As Nurse Thompson mentioned, our Health Department nurses at this time are working with the Health Department because we are in a community. We're in a pandemic. And so they are currently assigned to the Health Department and will continue to support the county's needs as we continue with the pandemic. We also have two DPS vacancies. Those positions are posted and we are actively seeking positions. When and if we transition to in-person learning, Nurse Howard and I are working with the nurses that we have to make sure that the bulk of their time will be spent serving our elementary schools if the board does move forward with in-person as well as our middle school learning center sites. Right now, our nurses are supporting us in terms of screening, supporting our exceptional children's department as they are participating in screening as well as supporting our learning centers.
Yeah, and Dr. Hardy, if I could add, we, we have some vacancies also within our Health Department. So we are also recruiting and looking for more school nurses.
Thank you all for that update. I almost forgot because we digged into the COVID dashboard that I want to say thank you for the toolkit that you all developed earlier to talk about reaching in that two-way communication with our families. That is amazing. I am so glad that we are touching every single family. And then I hope we use this for the future. Like this can't just be one-time COVID. It's like any other times that we're doing something and we need to make sure we touch our families. So I just want to say thank you. I think you heard the board say we need to do a better job. And I appreciate y'all stepping up to the plate, so thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing additional board comment. Ms. Byer.
Sorry about that. Dr. Hardy, have you heard the concern from folks about how much it is tearing at them as they make this decision by this deadline of the 18th about their wish to stay with their current teacher and that being a struggle for families as they evaluate what options they have going forward? And how are we communicating kind of what that will be? Because we really don't know which teachers are going in which direction. We can't really give them that information.
We know that, you know, once you've developed that relationship with your child's teacher, how important that is. And that is something that has been in the forefront of our cross-functional team as we've communicated. We have partnered very closely with Human Resources. Mr. Hickson began at the beginning of the year not only working with staff that would want to teach at Ignite, but also staff that may have any kind of accommodations. And we have, Human Resources has been working with our principals. Prior to this, Mr. Hickson met with every single elementary principal to start to identify staff that would potentially transition to Ignite. Those staff that may would transition to Ignite, we have, they are having some communication with their child's, with their particular classroom as we're having some of this two-way communication. And that is helping so that many of our families would be aware. One of the things that we want our families to know is that even if that teacher is transitioning to Ignite, that does not 100% mean that your child would have that teacher. We are going to do, to the extent possible, we know how important it is to ensure that we are able to keep those classroom communities together. The other thing that is a primary concern when and if we were to transition is to ensure that if you did not have your same child's teacher, that it was a teacher from that school because that also would allow that school community. And then if that were not to happen, one of the things that Mr. Hickson has built into our Ignite plan is community activities for youngsters that are from the same school. So we really want to make sure that we're being thoughtful. And we know that that is, is really important. There's no decision in a pandemic that's easy for our families. And so we want to try to make sure that we're being thoughtful about every decision that our families are having to make regarding their child and their progression academically, socially, as well as emotionally. I hope that's helpful.
No, that is helpful. I just hear so many people struggling with it because those relationships are so strong and look forward to ways that we can, can maintain that. And look forward to ways that we can be honest and acknowledge we may be on Plan C for a month, two months, the rest of the year. We just don't know. We're trying to plan. We've watched other districts pull back to Plan C just today and yesterday because of the rates in the state. Do you have any preliminary sense from the 54% of people that have answered kind of what people's preferences are for returning in person?
Did not look at the data today. And I've actually gotten a text message from the team that we may even be up to 56%. So I know that Mr. Hickson and Dr. Spencer had probably just looked at it. My, my last look was yesterday. And so I'm going to yield to Mr. Hickson if he has some summary or Dr. Spencer. And I think it may even be at 57%. So I know that, I just, before I turn it over to Ms. Nick, I just want to thank our teachers, our social workers, our counselors, our leaders. They are doing a fantastic job and just want to just appreciate them for the work that they've been doing, especially over the past few days. I know how important this work is to them and it is our intent to make that personal connection with our families. Mr. Hickson.
Yeah, I want to echo that thanks first. I was on the phone with several schools today, you know, giving them a personal kind of congratulations for the work that they've done. And we're just talking about and echoing that their teachers are working really hard, wanting to make sure every family has an equal opportunity to make this choice and is given the right information. And so what we've seen has actually been pretty across the board. So the summary is not easy. You'd have to really dig in a bit more. There are schools that are slightly more heavy on in-person. There are schools that are significantly heavier and virtual. Of course, we also want to be acknowledging that when we have response rates that are different. When you have a school that is 80%, that's a better picture. And I think actually Burton might have just gotten to 80%, which was the first one to get there. When you have a school that's at 80%, that's a much different picture than a school that might be at 40%. And they're working. Many of our schools. Many of our schools that started lower because they had low response rates on the internet survey have gone much higher. There are schools that started at 20 and are now at 55. So we want to celebrate them too. And the work is ongoing. So I think middle of next week, we'll have a much clearer picture. But I'll tell you right now, the summary is it is very different across the board. We have some schools that are far in one direction, other schools that are far in another direction.
Board members, any additional questions? All right, administration, we thank you very much for this update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sears. I'm going to, if Ms. Smith can pull back up the presentation, the last portion of this presentation is in reference to our learning centers. And this is before you this evening for action. Would like to thank Dr. Deeter Danner, Ms. Tracy Super Edwards, and Mr. Michael Vidalia. They have been doing a tremendous work with our learning centers. I want to thank all of our learning center staff. Just like our operational team, they have been on the front lines for DPS, showing up every single day, providing a learning, a safe learning environment for our youngsters. And we we appreciate all of the work that they are doing. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Tonight, I'm going to share an update regarding our enrollment, our program operational costs, as well as an update regarding our ABC Science Collaborative. Next slide, please. As of November 30th, the total enrollment was 332 students, 261 elementary and 71 secondary. Our participants comprised 34 that are full paying, four at the reduced price, 252 free, and 32 that are funded by our DPS Foundation. Next slide, please. This slide shares our operational costs. Really want to appreciate and thank the work of Dr. Danner, Mr. Modestu, and Mr. Solisur, working together to to help us provide this landscape for you regarding the fiscal outlook. The actual revenue is $70,513. Actual expenditures, excuse me, 818,041. The total expenditures over revenue through November 30th, $747,528. The total projected weekly revenue is $10,360. The weekly expenses, $71,000. The expenditures over revenue for one week, $60,640. The program expenditures over revenue for for the program operating through January 29th would be $459,560. The total program expenditures over revenue from August, so the beginning of the program through January 29th, would be $1,207,088. Next slide, please. The DP Durham Public Schools and our ABC Science Collaborative initiative is underway. Our learning center site managers were trained on the ABC Science Collaborative app prior to Thanksgiving break. The ABC Science Collaborative staff app is designed to share educational content and increase COVID awareness. It assists in the screening of COVID-19 prior to the arrival of campus. And it allows us to have a fast-track campus check-in by having participants self-report any COVID-19 exposures or their status, and to ensure precautions and reduce transmission on our campus. Families received information on November 30th about the ABC Science Collaborative app and have the option of enrolling in the program. Next slide, please. Again, board, this is before you this evening for action. Prelimarily, if we were to return to school in person as proposed at our previous board meeting in January, we were going to close our learning centers December 18th to allow staff to start to return in preparation for in-person instruction to begin the third week of January. Based on feedback from the board and action taken by the board, it is, we need to have the 14 days below 4%. We want to make sure that we are communicating with our learning center families in a manner that gives them the opportunity so that they can plan when and if we are to return to in-person learning. So at this time, before you, this evening for action is the opportunity to allow us to maintain our learning centers. It is staff recommendation that we would operate our learning centers through the end of January, which would be through January 29th. In the board materials, you can see the the cost that we would incur to do so. At this time, I will turn it back over to Mr. Sears, Dr. Danner, Mr. Modestu, Mr. LaSour, and myself. We are here for any questions that you may have.
Board members, this item is for action. Are there any motions or further discussion, Ms. Umstead?
Have a quick question. Thank you all for the thorough presentation and I appreciate you watching the numbers. We talked about this early when implementing the learning centers. Do we, have we identified areas that we want to pull this money from to cover the expenditures? Or would this be coming out of fund balance?
Ms. LaSour, can you jump in, please?
We don't plan to go into fund balance at this time for this purpose. We feel that based on the state's whole harmless, we'll be able to move some expenditures around and utilize more of those expenses for the purpose of moving forward, freeing up enough resources to cover a learning center cost.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you for the presentation on our learning centers and the numbers where they're at. I don't remember saying, are the learning centers at capacity and is there a waiting list?
Dr. Danner, would you like to speak to our current enrollment?
The current enrollment is 332 and we do have a waiting list. But we're at capacity concerning staff. We only have 95 staff and we have to follow the CDC guidelines. And so therefore, we can't add staff without, we can add staff, but we only can add staff once we know that we are at capacity relating to the CDC guidelines.
Dr. Danner, I know that we have had not as much interest. Those positions have been posted and we have not had as much interest as we would have anticipated in terms of folks warning for those positions.
That is correct.
And those positions are part-time or full-time?
They are temporary positions in our learning center.
Is it part-time?
It would be part-time, yes. Thank you.
Without benefits, right?
Without benefits, yes.
Okay. As we are also talking about and hearing, the numbers are rising in Durham, all over the nation, really. Wanted to know, has there been any spread in our learning centers?
Not at all. We hadn't had any transmission or spread in our learning centers.
Or at any of our DPS sites. And so that's one of the things that we are trying to make sure that we are very mindful, but we have not had any transmission at any of our DPS sites, which does include our learning centers.
Very thankful for that. And I'm sure that goes along with the three W's. So I'm assuming the mitigation of safety measures that are occurring in the learning centers are the same that would occur in the schools if we were to reopen?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There's more questions for now. Thank you.
Ms. Byer.
I appreciate hearing data about our learning centers. Do you know how long the waitlist is, Dr. Danner?
I don't have that data before me.
Do you have like a scope of, is it 50, is it 150? You have any ballpark or are we working with the Hope Learning Centers to find placement for families? Is that?
We are working with our partners in the Hope Centers as well as the YMCA. So the last number I saw was roughly over 100, but I have to get the actual count tomorrow.
And I think it's, I think it's great to hear that we haven't had any cases or transmission that we know of. We have had closures of sites for deep cleaning because we've had cases or suspected cases. Isn't that correct?
We have, we've had positive cases, but no transmission.
And what's the schedule for the holidays? Are these following the DPS traditional calendar for folks to have that two-week break? For our staff to also have that break?
Yes, our learning centers will close on December 18th and we will return on January 4th.
And families understand that as well already?
We have began communication with our families and will continue to do so so that they are prepared to provide childcare during that two weeks.
I know this is expensive, but I support this very much. Going ahead to continue this through January and and longer if needed. Thank you for your work on it.
Just one quick note to add regarding the finances is that Mr. LaSour and I are looking very carefully to see all the possible cost savings from the state hold harmless provision and and during the closure to support this without having to dip into fund balance. But that that is the primary reason why we are asking for the full funding for the $15 an hour increase that the county has proposed to start in in January with their with their motion in November is that the cost savings, well, aside from it being a recurring expense that requires recurring funds, that the cost savings that we're achieving in Plan C are being fully utilized to to maintain these learning centers in the absence of a source of tuition.
Mr. Raven.
I feel like we have already made a commitment to the community to be there for them. I definitely think that at this point in time, it would not be, I don't think it would be received well if we didn't, you know, continue to keep the learning centers open. So I just wanted to go ahead and make the motion to support the funding of the DPS learning centers through the specified time. I believe it was January 29th.
It's been moved by Mr. Raven, seconded by Ms. Byer, that we continue to support the learning centers through January. Additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Umstead?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Raven?
Aye.
Ms. Faiadris?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I, the chair for this meeting, vote aye. It is unanimous. Mr. Danner did say that there are less than 100 on the waitlist in the chat. Right?
Thank you.
Hardy, will you take us forward?
Think the next, thank you so much, board, for taking action on that. I think the next item was added by Ms. Byer to discuss the EOC scoring.
That's correct.
I don't have any slides for this. I just have a lot of questions and I've heard a lot of angst amongst our parents and our students that we are 100% virtual right now, district. And as far as I can tell, we are required by the state and the State Board to bring our students in for high school EOC testing in person. Some of that is early as next week, I believe. Is that right? In our year-round in small high schools. Some of it in January, when things look to be even worse. So I find myself at a quandary of wanting to know what we can do and how we can be protecting our students and our teachers and leading when the State Board seems to have missed the goal on this one. I know that our students can waive and take the test at the end of the year. I've heard that and there's an opt-out form that I've seen from that. But I know that a lot of families are really concerned because then they take an incomplete. And a lot of our students are applying for colleges actively. So I just wanted to hear from staff and other board members what thoughts you all have heard, what ideas are out there. I have heard that we could, as a board, set the student's grade minimum on this exam as a local board. So why don't we just set them all at 100 and just keep on going? Because they get 100 in my book in surviving a global pandemic and thriving. So just wanted to kick that off and see what we can do and how we do it going forward. I've I've also thought that perhaps Governor Cooper has some authority in this that we could appeal to. We did write a resolution asking for a waiver. Did we actually submit a waiver to DPI?
All right, let me go ahead and start, then I'm going to pass it on to Ms., Dr. Spencer. To your question, Ms. Byer, yes, we submitted the waiver to DPI and State Board of Education as well. I'm going to ask Dr. Spencer, I know State Board of Education has made some decisions regarding EOCs, just to give us a little bit overview of what's the decision that has been made. And I heard where Ms. Byer is trying to make some suggestions there. So we are really open here and I'm going to have some final words when Dr. Spencer finish. Dr. Spencer.
Thank you, Dr. Mabenga. So just a few items of clarification. I also don't have slides, so pardon this if it feels a little unorganized. But to Dr. Mabenga's point of what kind of the update on the State Board. So I would say out of the State Board discussion, two big things. Neither one were decisive. They were conversations. One is regarding the 20% requirement for our end-of-course test, as well as it would be CTE post-assessments, that those state assessments that are offered, being required to have a 20% component of a student's final grade in the course. That was a discussion. It was non-conclusive. They agreed to come back to it. The other piece was around a request for a state waiver to the federal government regarding the 95% participation requirement. That if we, basically what that means is when we do not test 95%, there is a penalty of sorts in our accountability. So the 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 discussion there is that the state is pursuing steps to ask a waiver for that 95% requirement. And they will continue to revisit that in the coming months. It really, I don't think it even goes to the federal government until February. And so we're still not in any place where we would have a decision on that waiver. I would say both of those conversations are are still in conversation at the state level. For us in Durham Public Schools, I would say to your, some of your kind of questions and concerns of what we've done at the local level, we have tried to make it to really work with our families of their comfort level. So offering pathways, offering options. One would of course be the fall window. One is the makeup window, which we actually have requested and received an extension through February 15th. And then we actually have also requested and received a window that would be a spring window that dates to be determined for for students to also be able to take that fall test. So our goal is to not push students into feeling like they have to take it in the fall. Obviously, a Obviously, a lot can change between now and April or May, but we also, I think, one of the things that our schools said is for students who have worked really hard and feel prepared, we want to honor their work and to provide them that option. And so our schools have been working with students to identify who's coming in, who's not coming in, being prepared for that. One other piece that you mentioned, Ms. Byer, was kind of the grade scale. So typically, our grade scale is a 0 to 100 range based off of the student's achievement on that state test. Based off of the state DPI guidance, we, we were allowed to change that range and have had conversation with principals and schools to identify our range as a 50 to 100. So no student taking that exam would make less than a 50 and, and for the reasons that you stated. And then some more in terms of why we would do that. So that has already really been established. The one, the one peak decision that has not been as established is for the students who postpone and take the incomplete and what happens if things don't shift and, and they're unable to come in. And quite frankly, we're, we made the decision not to make that decision yet because we are awaiting so many state decisions on that. So hopefully that helps provide some clarity to where we are. We certainly recognize that it is a super challenging situation. And Dr. Mabenga, feel free to add or clear up anything that has been said that might be helpful.
I think you're right.
Been involved as well.
Thank you for pretty much giving us that overview. Among us superintendent, we had this conversation. We are really struggling as well as State Board of Education. I just want to say where our boards, it's all, and then I'm going to have my, my two cents after the conversation.
Mr. Raven?
So I'm, I'm along the same lines of Ms. Byer. I guess the only thing that I was questioning is what type of grading scale we would use. So hearing the 50 to 100 made, made a lot of sense. I don't know if they have some type of bell curve that the state has to use almost on a sense to make sure that a district is, is allocating grades on a, you know, some type of collegiate schedule. I'm not sure of what the requirements are. I mean, I would even be open to an 80 to 100. It's not quite what Ms. Byer had in mind, but at least we could show that we have two grades, you know, we have As and Bs. So that, in my opinion, that is a range. It's a, it's a narrow one, but it is a range. And my only hesitation of of even suggesting that kids just take an incomplete, I know I took an incomplete before. And when I had to go back the next semester and try to take this, take a test, it wasn't that easy. So that, that's, that's my only hesitation of, of making that recommendation first. It should definitely be an opportunity for them to utilize that, but I think being able just to narrow down on a grading scale, I think that helps tremendously. And I know we need to meet our 95% if possible.
Ms. Umstead?
Just have a couple of questions for clarity. So if we change the scale, the district changes the scale, do students still have to come in to take the, do we still need to meet the 95% participation rate? Even if we say the scale is like 100 to 100 or 98, like even if we did that, do students still need to come in? Participation?
So, yes, they, they would still need to take it. And of course, it could be through the course of the year, through the end of the school year. So I, I, I continue to come back to they don't have to take it on that particular day. And so I would say that the 50 to 100 and/or, that is to, to Mr. Raven's point, that is actually produced in our testing software. So we put the range in and then it provides the score based off of the scale score and achievement. And so that is flexible. Like I said previously, it was 0 to 100 and, and that would be a shift in the software. So to Ms. Umstead's question, that, I think one of the questions would be that grade that is really encouraging participation and pulling students in. And so just thinking about that.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. I was hearing the scale and I was, wanted to remind myself like, oh, but students still would have to like, that the scale doesn't fix actually the issue of the in-person instruction. So I, this is a challenging situation. We all know this and we continue to see new challenges every day with COVID. There is an option for families who don't feel comfortable to not come in and take those exams and I encourage families to do that. If, if a family is like, I'm not feeling safe, it's not comfortable, we have a couple additional windows, like you said, Dr. Spencer. Who, if a family is feeling that, but they don't know what to, what to do, who do they contact to say, I'm not comfortable taking that exam right now?
I definitely would say reaching out to the school. I think different point people at the school, obviously the administration is, is first and foremost responsible. The testing coordinators at the school, the school counselor, the, the teachers are the ones that are working with students in terms of who's testing. And so I, I'm, I think it's safe to say that if a student expresses that or a parent expresses that to the school level, that, that it will be heard. And they are actually probably already having that conversation because they're trying to make sure that the school is prepared of who needs transportation, who doesn't need transportation. And I, I think our schools have done a great job in preparation of different classrooms. You know, there's the 10 to 12 students in a classroom. Our buses are at max of 23. And so it, it does require a tremendous amount of planning on behalf of our schools.
Thank you for that, Dr. Spencer. So families, please contact your school and let them know if you don't feel comfortable with that in-person learning. I did want to also share that we, I shared the resolution that we passed with our Durham delegation. So they have received a copy of that. I know they also had received some emails from families around the fact that this is state law, that 20% of the grades. I did want to share that that has been passed along.
Can I also add, Ms. Umstead, that I actually did pass along the signed resolution to the State Board of Education and also to Chairman Eric Davis. And so that has also been forwarded on your, on your behalf.
Ms. Fiyadris?
Thank you. You know, this is definitely one of those conversations that we've had about, you know, at the federal level, at the state level and at the local level. So I'm, I'm definitely very encouraged that there are things that, that we are, that we can do. I'm very concerned about the early colleges, the specialty schools that we have, specialty schools that, you know, their testing is in December. So I know that we talked about like the flexibility of time, like we manage logistics of when. But, you know, what, what do we tell our, the first folks who always, you know, have to deal with these situations? That's my first question. And then the other thing is that as parents are considering options, I know that a lot of advocates, like, you know, there was a forum last night. There's a lot of conversations that are happening with advocates and so grateful for those conversations that are being held in community. There's, in terms of the options, if students take an incomplete, it's important to, to note, especially as, as teachers know, like for, for courses that require prerequisites, what can we do? Because, you know, it, it would affect like course sequencing, like if, if they take an incomplete, how does that affect like the sequence of courses that they have to take? And, you know, and also like, I'm, I'm thinking about those courses that are, like, you know, that, that require all these prerequisites and, and, you know, our kids might miss it. Especially those that are close to graduation and need to progress. What can we do at this local level? Or prereqs if, if they take incompletes?
So one, so one piece of the incomplete, I think it would be important to note is that schools would be expected to clear up the incomplete by June 25th. So there, there is an end to an incomplete unlike in college where you may transfer it into the next semester. Our, our kind of transcript process does not really allow an incomplete to carry. So I would definitely anticipate that as we go through the spring, as we work with getting information regarding the waivers, state information, that we would continue to provide guidance to our schools on the incompletes and, but also continue to work with our students to identify a time that lends itself to where they feel comfortable coming in to test. And so I, I would definitely say that within Durham Public Schools, that an incomplete, that, that schools are not making decisions of, of a course based off of the incomplete. They, they also have the other data, got the quarter one, quarter two data, and then that typically would be 40%, 40%, and then 20% would be the final exam. So they still have good data with your quarter one and quarter two data, and we would expect that they would utilize that if the student had not taken the assessment. And, and Dr. Cardy, I see you shaking. Feel, feel free to jump in. That's, I, I think that that goes without saying that that would be the expectation.
Yeah, Ms. Fiyadris, just to complete from Dr. Spencer, we're not going to hold any students. We're going to work with our families. I'll give you an example. Let's, rarely we have a lot of students that are pretty much doubling courses, like you're taking Math 1, Math 2 on the same year. But if that's the case, but based on other work that you've been able to do, whatever is 80% excluding the state exam, we're going to work with our, our families to make sure that the students will be able to proceed to their next class.
I'm so sorry. Before we move, I did ask about the specialty schools and, you know, their schedule, like the, the December dates, like, you know, I know that we talked about some flexibility, but specifically for those schools, like what, what are the options?
I think the options pretty much the same as we highlighted for traditional schools and our families have two options. Either they're going to take it next week or they can wait till June. Unfortunately, as we know, if there's going to be any decision from the federal government, that's going to be around February. So we're telling our families, if they're not feeling comfortable, they got till June, so that they'll be able to take that assessment. One good comment that I was able to see this week or last week in social media, where a parent said, this is really a big dilemma because if I have to postpone taking the exam till June, most likely probably I'll be forgetting most of the materials that I've been able to learn. That's where our principals would struggle, saying, if you're taking now, you still have those materials fresh, you may do with a while. If you wait till June, not being in that particular class, it's going to be really hard for you probably to be able to recall some of those materials. That's where we are really struggling. That's where some of our families, they're going to struggle, but again, we give them those options. I wish at this point, somebody could just waive those assessment for everybody and that we're not in our points and the state board is struggling. And we're probably going to wait probably around February before a final decision can be made. So to be really brief with my response, those specialty high school, three of them except early college, they'll be taking assessment next week. Again, families, they can wait till June.
Ms. Byer?
I saw Mr. Sider, so I want to, we've got excited.
Mr. Sider?
Just a brief, just a brief note that I worked with the principals of those three schools that are having December tests and we collaborated on some additional communication with the families because, you know, as, as, as they have pointed out, frequently when we are speaking on behalf of the entire district, we've frequently emphasized the traditional and the year-round calendars and overlooks. So we did some special direct communication from the district level to families at the specialty schools and provided the principals with additional toolkits, information. The, the different schools, the different school populations, the families have different concerns and we worked with the principals to help them out with that communication.
So I heard our public comment tonight and it, I had not heard the news story about the superintendent's conference that met and spread COVID cases around among superintendents. And that to me says, I would like this board to say, we will not hold in-person EOCs for our small schools next week. We are not in person, we are virtual. This assessment data is not going to give us anything reliable, valuable, is not a valid learning experience for children. It is a check-the-box thing that the state and the feds want. I know there's going to be a federal waiver coming, I can feel it. So why would we subject these students, families and, and our educators to come in into the buildings in this wave right between Thanksgiving and the Christmas winter break? For what purpose would we do that? So I would like to know from Mr. Sue or someone else or, or Dr. Spencer, how can we stop the train on those assessments next week? What can we do? I'm, I'm glad to hear that we applied for a waiver and were denied, that at least says that we've taken some steps. Anything we can do?
Mr. Sue?
Well, I, so for an orderly approach, I think it'd be important to, for me to understand what administration's view of options are. It is possible for the school board to change the calendar. As you know, the calendar has a lot of locked-in limitations. And so what the knock-on effect of that would be is hard to say. I'm not prepared to give you a specific recommendation this evening on whether you could, without problematic consequences, change your calendar. I'd be more than happy to work with Dr. Mabenga's staff to get a sense about whether there are options there. I realize that time is very short. But I'm reluctant to start a chain of events going that might create other problems down the line.
Mr. Sue, I'm willing to work with you as far as legal matters is concerned, but my concern here is pretty much about students' grades. High school students, they're going to need a GPA to be able to move forward. Let's say we get a waiver from the federal government. I hope we'll be able to get another waiver at a state level as well. If we're not going to have that waiver and then the state board, state legislators, they decide that, yes, there is a waiver, but this assessment need to continue. So we're going to jeopardize these students' grades and that's the consequences that I don't want to take lightly. And again, I'll follow your pleasure.
So you said we could set a minimum for them? And Mr. Raven talked about an 80. We could set it at 90. I would assume we could set it in anything because.
The grade, the grading scale per DPI's guidance, the grading scale can be set by the district. But remember, the grading scale is really for students who are taking the test. And so thinking about, thinking about that. I, I will advocate again, just a reminder on the postpone, that all, I just want to remind us all that students may, any student may postpone it based on their comfort level. And so I just want to reinforce that idea that, that we are very much trying to give students an opportunity, but also giving them opportunities from now until spring. We have our initial, our window is actually eight days for traditional high schools because they need more days so that they have smaller classroom settings. So Mr. Sue's reference of the calendar, so normally it's the last five days of the grading period for us, we are actually carrying it in to the makeup days with permission from DPI. And then additional time was granted through February 15th. And then we actually went ahead and requested additional opportunities through the spring. So it is not our desire to test, follow testing all through the spring, but we want to make sure that our families have options as, as we go through the coming months with comfort level perhaps shifting and waiting on a waiver.
Mr. Raven?
So I'll just, I'll just make my point again is that
So I'll just, I'll just, um, make my point again, is that we should offer the students to be able to, to accept the incomplete. Uh, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that there's a certain amount of information that you're, that you're gonna forget. You know, it's just like when kids go on summer break. There's a certain amount of information that you're gonna forget. So if we could at least minimize, um, the effect of their grades, potentially when they take it, you know, later on at the, in the spring or beginning of summer, I think that will go a long way. So I feel like we just need to be able to focus on, on what range we can offer that, that's realistic, uh, that we won't get too much persistent back. And I think that will go a long way to help the families.
Board members, I really support that decision.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, that's only if they take the test? So they still have to come in and take the test? Which doesn't address Ms. Byer's point about cases surging and discomfort with that.
But they could take it in the future and the scale would still prevail. So they would not have to take it starting next week. You could take it in February. I think you said, uh, the spring, I can't remember the exact date, Dr. Spencer. So you could take an incomplete now and the scale would last that whole time. Is that, okay, so I could take my class now, take my test in the spring and the scale I could, let's just say with eighty to one hundred, the scale eighty to one hundred would stay. Okay.
Mr. Raven, would you like to turn that into a motion?
I move that we, um, adjust our scale for end of course to, from eighty to a hundred point scale. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Raven, seconded by Mr. Lee, uh, that we adopt an eighty to a hundred point scale. Is there further discussion? Ms. Lewis, I'm pretty sure I saw your hand and did not get to you. Apologies for that.
Okay, the questions were answered, but I see Julie and Ken's hand both up right now. I'm good.
We may be gonna say the same thing, but could we add CTE post-assessments? Because that's the other state assessment that is being given during this time period.
Okay, before we amend it, Mr. Sue, did you have something to add?
Uh, well, the question is whether you're giving administration discretion on how to meter the eighty to a hundred. It may not be an important point, but in other words, is it, every test gets graded and the minimum is eighty? So some people could get between eighty-one and a hundred in addition, if you're above the minimum? Or is it something else? Or does the board want to give administration discretion on that? I just raise it so that administration knows how to carry out the board's wishes.
Okay, Mr. Raven, would you like to amend that to include both of those statements or one of them?
I would like to include both of them. Do I need to make the motion again?
Okay, but we've got it recorded. We're good.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, do you second the amendment? I'll get.
I still second. I still second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded in Ms. Vayadara's discussion.
I mean, the motion is on the floor right now. Um, you know, I was just thinking, going as high as we could. But, you know, the, the current motion is, is in place. I mean, I was, I was gonna say, let's just go for ninety, I mean, but, um, yeah.
You could make a friendly amendment and, and move, yeah, see if you would accept it.
I'd, I'd just, I'd love to make it from the amendment. I think let's give our kids the best chance. It's twenty percent. Can we go for ninety versus eighty? I mean, there's still, you know, the bell curve and I, I like what Fred said. There's still gonna be some variability from ninety to a hundred, but let's give our kids the best, uh, the best shot, especially since, you know, um, this is not, this is not a typical year. Kids are not learning the same with, uh, all the constraints and we're in a pandemic, so.
Ms. Umstead, I'll, I'll accept your, your comment, but we've, we've got a request for an amendment.
I, I can hold my comment.
Okay, Mr. Raven, will you accept the amendment to go to a minimum of ninety on the score?
I would be hesitant, hesitant to accept it for the one fact that I don't think you can have a grade and scale with one, with one letter grade. I, I just, I think the optics of it is bad, um, even though I agree with the sentiment. That, that's my only question. That, that would be my only, my only thought. If, if the rest of the board is comfortable with it, I'm definitely not gonna vote against it and not, and I'd happily accept it, but that would be my only caution, is that can you have a grade and scale with one letter?
Well, my, I, I'm dating myself here. I, I believe a ninety at some point was a B plus. It's a ninety-two or three, that's an A. Can, can, what the heck do we do anymore?
It's a ten point scale, so ninety.
Yeah.
Yeah, we changed it about three years ago. Ninety, ninety to one hundred is an A.
All right, we do not have the friend, very friendly amendment, despite its friendliness. So there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion on the motion?
On Mr. Sue's hand.
So there isn't actually any such thing as a friendly amendment. If any two members of the board, in other words, if there's a motion to amend the motion, if anybody seconds the emotion, then that, that motion to amend is before the board. Um, I don't wanna prolong the discussion, but my point is that, that if somebody else wanted to second the motion, then that would be in front of the board for decision. And to re- refresh the, I don't think I've had this discussion with the board since we've had a number of new members. But in classic form, the motion to amend, if Pat adopted, would only amend the motion before the body, which would then be ninety to a hundred scale. Does that make sense? Anyway.
Yes, so Ms. Vayadara's friendly amendment only needs a second to be considered. And then it is voted up and down, and then it's either amended or the original motion is then voted up and down. Does Ms. Vayadara's friendly amendment to go to a ninety to a hundred have a second or not?
Second.
Right, it's been seconded by Ms. Byer. We've had some discussion from Mr. Raven. Is there further discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Raven's motion. All right, then we will vote on whether to accept the amendment to Mr. Raven's motion, which would change the floor of the grading scale from eighty to a hundred. Ms. Umstead.
Aye.
You vote aye to change to, from eighty to ninety?
Yes.
This is the motion. Okay, Mr. Lee.
No.
Mr. Raven.
No.
Ms. Vayadara.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
No.
I, the chair of this meeting, vote aye. The motion to amend Mr. Raven's motion passes for three. So the motion on the floor is, should we change the grading scale for, uh, final exams and CTE pathway exams to ninety to one hundred as the scale? Is there further discussion on that motion? Ms. Umstead.
Yeah, well, just for my clarification, sorry, I apologize, just for my clarification. So that means no matter what they, what a student scores, the lowest they can, they'll be recorded as a ninety. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, okay, all right, that's all I needed to know.
That is correct. And then that's get, uh, you know, this is worth discussion. This is just a final exam. So, you know, eighty percent of what they did in the class matters, whether they did nothing and have a very low grade or did everything and have a hundred. Um, there's still other input into what makes up the final grade. Further discussion?
Yes, just one clarification.
Please.
Is this scale that we adopting, is that just for this particular year or moving forward? Is that a permanent, uh, amendment that you guys are making to the policy?
No, it was my understanding that the original motion was through the end of the school year. I think June was the period that was provided to us.
I'm glad to hear that because, uh, depending on what we do, we sending a message, uh, to our students.
Mr. Sue, did you have something to add?
Also wanted to be clear and, and having lost, ended a conversation a little bit from memory, this is only for the state mandated in CTE exams. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Umstead.
All right, Dr. Spencer also has her hand up, but, and the state has given us the flexibility. Is it for both sessions or is it only for, and this might be where you were getting to, Dr. Spencer. I don't know that the state gave it for both.
Actually, it, the state has provided the guidance, I believe, for the twenty twenty-one school year. I probably do need to go back and, and verify that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that that would, and my question in fact was partly Ken Sue's question, which was, um, is it just for state assessments? And then part two, is it fall and spring semester, um, assessments? And I think the answer is yes to both of those, but I just wanna make sure.
Mr. Raven is nodding his head. This, this will be our pandemic year grading scale. All of the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Ms. Lewis.
Oh, even though we're not moving to, um, we're keeping the option for pa- families to take an incomplete and postpone taking the test until the spring, until June. And with this grading scale, no matter what they do, even if there's some loss, they'll still get an A. So it'll be in the best interest of families, especially not feeling safe to wait. And it doesn't har- it won't harm them. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification and continued conversation, Mr. Sears.
You're welcome. And my own addition to the discussion is that, and I don't think I'm planting a seed here, um, because I think there's already some action on this, but the administration is preparing for what to do if the demand for in-person testing outweighs the supply, should teachers not be able or willing to come in, uh, for, to administer the tests. I've, I've heard whispers that that's already a possibility at one site. And so just doubling down to encourage the administration to be ready for that. Not encouraging that from our staff, but, Ms. Byer.
And, and I assume that, um, we'll communicate this out with families and with this new information that folks will largely have the, exercise that option to, to postpone and know that they have the board's support in that, um, that that will be communicated out before, uh, small high schools have to make these decisions, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. We will communicate this with our families tomorrow.
We have a double yes. Ms. Umstead.
I just wanna add how frustrating this is, um, to have our hands tied in many ways. So I think I want the community here that this board is, is spending a lot of time on this tonight because our hands are tied with state and federal. And so as quickly as we have a new administration that's coming in on the federal level and hopefully we can see some changes and some waivers coming, but I just wanted to express the frustration, um, with our hands kind of being tied on this matter.
Okay, board, if we're ready for a vote? If you're clear on the motion, vote. If you're, if you're not, we can restate it. Ms. Umstead.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
No.
Mr. Raven.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to my meat button. Could you restate the motion?
The motion is for us for this twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year to adopt a grading scale for state required final exams and CTE exams to be ninety to one hundred.
So we voted on the amendment first and now we're voting on the actual motion. Okay, so I, I vote aye.
Thank you. Ms. V- Vayadara.
Um, aye for the amendment motion, right?
Yes. Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. The motion passes six to one. We will adopt a ninety to one hundred grading scale for required final exams and CTE pathway exams. The administration, per the discussion, will communicate that out to families, given that this is quite complex with the incomplete and postponement. And, uh, we wanna make sure during this surging case time that, that we get that information across to our families. Thank you all. All right, board and administration, we will move to item nine A, our penultimate item. Mr. Lee has something, uh, after that. Community Safety and Wellness Task Force, Ms. Umstead.
Uh, thank you all. So we leave this, originally the set of bylaws came to us from the city to start a community safety and wellness task force in, I believe it was February. So we've voted as a board to support that and have voted a couple of different versions of bylaws. But now it's the time for us to appoint members to the task force. And so I've sent you all and it's updated in the packet, um, what I would like to see is our process and I'm open to feedback on this. The school board has five, um, vacancies on the community wellness task force. One, it's, uh, education focus, two, youth under age twenty-five, and then two that are at large seats. And so I would like, um, I wanted to keep this simple to allow, um, people to, as many people as possible to apply. So you'll see on this statement of interest, if you can scroll down, this, um, Smith. Last name, address, some contact information, which position and, um, people are interested in filling, and then a statement of interest, um, describing why you're interested in serving in the role on behalf of Durham Public Schools, and then also explaining the qualifications, education, and experiences that make this person, um, feel best suited for the role. Again, I want to keep it simple. I hope that we have a lot of students that are interested in this and so wanting to make sure it's something that is accessible to all. The timeline, I do have, um, this being due Sunday, January fourth with, at midnight, which would allow time for Ms. Smith to compile the applications, send them to us as a board, and then we can make a decision at our January fourteenth work session on the folks that will take these positions. The goal is that the task force will begin work at the end of January, so that I hope will give us some time to make sure these appointments are filled. Questions, I'm sorry?
Or Ms. Byer.
I really appreciate you bringing this here. Um, I think this is gonna be an exciting, um, working group for our community to address some long overdue issues. The only thing that occurred to me about this is, do we have or want to set any lower age on that youth position? Do we, do we want elementary students to think that they are going to be considered? Do we wanna limit it to high school? Do we wanna include middle school ages? I mean, anybody under twenty-five, um, I don't know if we, if we want to encourage or discourage, uh, some of our youngest learners from, from participating in this very, um, challenging committee.
Ms. Byer, that's a good question. Um, I would be hesitant to change it just because we voted on this in the bylaws and this, who the members are included in the bylaws, but I think we can use definitely our discretion, um, as we appoint members.
Ms. Lewis.
Will, will, will we be sharing this document, um, through the schools for the youth to be aware of it?
I hope so. Um, after we approve this process tonight, I would ask that you all send it to your networks, that we, um, get it posted on our website. Hopefully I can work with, um, Mr. Cedric to get it posted, um, to all of our schools as well so that we can widely have this available to our community.
Additional discussion or a motion, Ms. Vayadaris?
I just had additional comments. I'm really grateful for the community members who have reached out. As we all know, this, this is something that has commitment from DPS. There's also the city and county have been appointing. And not everybody's, I guess in terms of like who gets in, in each of these places, I'm very encouraged to hear about DPS parents that are considering to apply. So, you know, folks who, you know, please help, help us spread the word and, and as you can see also, there's a question that they had is if we had our own process. And so as you all can see, we do have our own process. Every institution has their own process for this. So I'm really grateful that we have this going on and we'll be communicating about our criteria and who gets elected. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Vayadaris.
I would move approval of the application process for the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Lewis, that we approve the nomination process for the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Umstead.
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Vayadaris?
Aye.
Mr. Raven?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It passes unanimously. We're at the end of our meeting except for follow-up items. Mr. Lee?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to amend a previous vote that we had. Since we voted, since we were able to vote on an item and the item actually did not pass. According to parliamentary rules, a board member can request a, a motion to amend the vote and for another vote, and this would be for an item regarding, relating to sports. Last meeting, I believe, we voted down the, I guess, spring sports, I think it was. At the start of spring sports or sports for the rest of the year. And so I would like to make that motion to amend that vote, to get a revote of it and include in discussion.
Okay, board members, there is a motion on the floor to amend a previous vote. Mr. Su, does that motion need a second? I assume it does.
Yes.
Is there a second to reconsider the athletics vote?
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Raven has seconded the motion to amend the vote. Ken, are we essentially voting twice? Do we need to approve the motion to amend it and then amend it or?
So I would, I think it would be, the normal procedure would be for the motion to state the requested change. So if the motion is to, for example, permit a certain number of sports to operate in the spring or whatever the specific is, I'd go ahead and ask Mike to specify specifically what he's proposing, and then that would be the emotion that is before the body for discussion and possibly action.
And is there any prohibition on any member of the board regardless of the previous vote? Making the motion or seconding the motion?
No.
Thank you.
And just for background, a motion to reconsider that would happen at the same meeting as the action taken would require somebody who was on the prevailing side to make the motion, but that's not the case at a separate session.
Okay. So Mr. Lee, I, I, I assume I know what, what it is you're, you're moving, but can you state that clearly with Ken's guidance?
Sure. In our previous meeting, we voted down all sports. First, before I make my motion, I would like for Mr. Hackney, I believe he's still on the, on the call, to make a, make a, let us know which sports that were under consideration then. And then I'll make a motion after that, if that's okay with the chair.
Vice Chairman Lee, I, I have sent a document to Ms. Smith. And if she is, if she is able to post that document, that will allow Mr. Hackney to take you through the sports that we did recommend at that previous board meeting and their start, their start date.
Okay, thank you.
So that that would be helpful for this discussion. And then at the board's pleasure, we're here for questions. Thank you so much for staying on, Mr. Hackney. Go ahead.
So currently, well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Mavenga. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Right now, what we are proposing is the start of basketball, basketball season officially started Monday. So we're proposing that we are allowed to start basketball and cheerleading. We want, we were asking for preseason workouts for soccer, men's and women's lacrosse, and football. Currently, swim is already started. We have some information regarding that, that, that we need to discuss. Also, field hockey is, has already started, and I don't know if we, if that season is salvageable. So at this particular time, basketball, cheerleading, and then we're recommending the start of workouts for soccer, lacrosse, men's and women's lacrosse and football.
What's, what sport did you say was not, it may not be salvageable?
Field hockey. Field, field hockey. And, and there is some more information regarding swim that, that we need, that also needs to be discussed.
Discuss at a later date or can it be discussed today?
Well, absolutely, it can be discussed now. I mean, we have exhausted every possibility to try to, to reserve facilities for swim. We have a great partnership with Durham Parks and Recreation at this point in time because of the governor's new orders for people inside, inside for, I think it's ten people inside or something of that nature. As well as, they, they just weren't able to accommodate us during this time because they just didn't support it. We also looked into private facilities, but there were limits on the number of student athletes that could participate and things of that nature. So it is, it is truly disheartening, but we, we truly do not have a facility for swim at this time. And we desperately want it. We hate this for our student athletes, but we just don't have a facility to, to accommodate.
Mister.
So, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Hardy.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hackney. Mr. Lee, swimming was not part of our recommendation at the last board meeting. To Mr. Hackney's point, we have been working and unfortunately, we do not have a facility where we can provide that. However, that was not a recommendation at the last board meeting because we had anticipated, based on our communication and work with the community, that unfortunately, we would not be able to provide a site. We're going to work with our athletic directors and coaches and our families. And we are, we are disheartened as, as Mr. Hackney mentioned. The recommendation to reconsider for the purpose of the motion that you did make were those first four sports that were listed. And you could see the preseason workouts as well as the first contest. And to Mr. Hackney's point, basketball for school districts that had already opened athletics. Those students are already in their, their preseason. This season has already started. And this would, if we did reopen, that would have the ability for students to practice in preparation of the first contest. I think it's January fourth. I had it pulled up on my other screen, but it, it went away. So I think it would be January fourth for the first contest. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just one, one more question from me. I apologize for taking the mic for so long. I, you mentioned when, in your research with swimming, the challenges with inside, with the regulations about inside. Basketball is an inside sport as well. What are the differences here between an inside sport such as swimming versus basketballs that could be quite closer in contact?
Well, well, according to the, to the state, they're allowing that for sports. That doesn't apply to sports. However, we are dependent upon Durham Parks and Recreation to provide facilities for swim. And they are, they're not in a position to accommodate right now.
Okay, thank you. And just for, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm good for now, if other board members would like to ask questions.
So the, Ms. Byer, I'll come to you in a second, but the, the motion has thus been clarified by administration that it's for the, the sports that are not quote unquote, spring sports. We saw it on the list. If there's any confusion, we can pull that back up as to which block of sports we're voting for or against tonight.
Right. Ms. Smith, would you bring that, would you bring those back up so we can at least have it on the screen as we, as we're in discussion? The, the sports.
Ms. Byer, go ahead with your comments, please.
I saw Mr. Hackney raise his hand, and it sounded really compelling.
No, no, just point of clarification. The High School Athletic Association has released an amended sports schedule that doesn't go to coincide with traditional fall, winter, and spring calendar. So our phase in of athletics is accordance to the amended schedule that they released. So the next sports that would be coming up would be lacrosse, men's soc, men's and women's lacrosse, men's soccer, and football. So that's the reason for the order in which you see.
Thank you. Ms. Byer?
I appreciate the, the chance to discuss this. When we met with principals, I told them this is always, all of this is always up for consideration and reconsideration as we're figuring this out. What, what are the metrics for the North Carolina High School Athletic Association to call sports off again like they did in the spring? What are they watching for making that decision? Or are they leaving that to each district?
This point in time, they're leaving it to each district. I think, and I can only speculate that if numbers got out of hand, they would, they would pull athletics like they did last year. But I know it was the beginning of the pandemic. No one really understood what was going on during that time. And so that was the safest thing to do. Right now, I think they're leaving it up to each district to determine what, what they do in terms of athletics.
That's the difficulty, I think, for everyone trying to piecemeal these decisions. And I know we want to feel like things are normal and things are safe to play. But I still have great hesitation and, and try to treat these decisions on, would I encourage my child to play under these conditions? And I have to say, the answer for my children and my mom's hat is no. What? What's the rush to make this decision now? Is anything going to happen with sports over the winter break or in the next, you know, coming weeks between when we could meet in January?
Ms. Byer, there, there are no contests that would be happening over the winter break. However, if there was a decision by the board for reopening, it would allow for basketball and cheerleading for them to prepare for their first contest. And then for soccer, lacrosse, and football to have the opportunity for what we call phase one or phase two and three. So that preconditioning and the opportunity to work out. That does, if we were to have contests, having students have the opportunity to anticipate those contests usually does prevent potential injury and allow students to prepare for athletic competitions. So that would be a potential benefit. In terms of a sense of urgency, please know that, as you know, we will take the direction at the pleasure of the board. You can take this decision, make a decision this evening. This is something that if you wanted us to provide an update, we're more than happy to do that at your request at any work session or board meeting.
Ms. Byer, was that all of your comments?
There's just no telling with me tonight, but I, I think that's all for now. I just, I just feel it's heartbreaking either way. I'd love us to come up with some way. What is compelling to me is that our children should be active. They should be outside. Outside is where they should be doing all sports. So it's the indoor sports that cause me great concern. And are there ways that we can showcase our children, have an event for athletes at, at some of our high schools or at county stadium and get the scouts in to see how great our kids are? Because we don't want that limiting their future, but they also, it really isn't safe to play basketball inside, so.
Ms. Umstead.
Thank you all for, for the presentation and information. I wanted to know, are we try, I know that we have our COVID dashboard and we're trash, tracking information. Is this athletic sports students included in that, in those COVID metrics? I see head nods, so that's a yes. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know, I think the Athletics Association has updated their guidance to say too, that athletes need to wear masks while practicing and in play. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And we, we had already made an amendment where we are requiring masks to be worn during practice and during contests.
Okay. Are there other things that we're doing above and beyond the guidance?
Oh, yes, ma'am. We, we are, we are meet, we're having preseason meetings with coaches to gather their input and their concerns. We're having parent meetings with Nurse Howard to, and Nurse Howard stresses the importance of the parent's role and the student athlete's role in safety. We have COVID videos that, that we're showing coaches. We, we have taken a number of steps and, and I will say I will commend our, our athletic directors and our coaches and, and student athletes. They're doing a tremendous job. In a lot of ways, we've had, unfortunately, we've had a few cases, but none of it has been due to athletics. They've acquired this at home. But we, I think in a lot of ways, we prevented the spread because we have been proactive in speaking to parents. And the parents have been forthcoming with information. And so we've been able to catch things before they get out of hand and, and make sure that those students are isolated, make sure they, you know, they go through the proper steps and protocols as we keep everyone safe.
And then I know we're in close partnership with public health, so we're making sure also students and families know where to go get tested if they need to get tested. And contact tracing is also happening within our public health department. Is that correct? I see head nods, but.
That is correct. And I, I want to say that we, we had meetings with the health department as well, as we talked about sports. And athletics were also provided resources to provide for our students. So understanding that this metric is district wide, even though it's athletics, we've taken the same precautions and the same measures.
And Ms. Umstead, the student count includes our student athletes as well as our students at the learning centers.
Thank you.
Board members, I, I wanted to share my, my concerns and, and why this is such a tough decision. I'm grateful to our principals for sharing the, the real impact of this on a call that I had with them yesterday. And I'm, I'm, if we were not able to do sports this year, I, Natalie used the phrase heartbreaking. It is heartbreaking to know that from the sheer lack of ability to just get out and exercise and, and have the mental health improvements to the showcasing of our top. From the sheer lack of ability to just get out and exercise and and have the mental health improvements to the showcasing of our top athletes. To the secondary showcasing of. Athletes that may not get a look from scouts, but for, you know, the scouts that come to see that star athlete. And and I acknowledge there are very real impacts for the lives of our students and that this is an equity issue that. As a district of eighty-two percent students of color. There are opportunities that could be lost if we do not have athletics this year. That weighs heavy, 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 heavy on me. At the same time, there there are some contradictions that I just can't square and and. One of them is that the State Department of Health and Human Services has recommendations around sports. That are different from those of of the the High School Athletic Association. And, you know, we we have to ask why that is. And I don't think there's a legitimate argument that that the High School Athletic Association has an interest in in playing sports. And and that is that is their position. And so if if we were to consider the HHS as unbiased. Their recommendations carry weight with me and they've updated those twice. Once in late October and once in late November. And several of the sports that are proposed to, you know, allow practice are in the red category. And that that worries me. That said, I've we've had tons of emails from students and families that have said these tournaments are going on and there's not a lot of spreads. So that that matters to me, too. I I I have two two further principal concerns. One is that if if we're willing to, you know, allow athletics to happen. Why aren't we willing to go beyond learning centers? And bringing students back, the the bringing athletics back before we're bringing back classrooms bothers me. And then finally, you know, the cases were what they were in late November when we voted this down. And they are beyond worse today. And so I I'm there's just that that contradiction of voting to bring something back and we have the community spread we have. Worries me. Finally, and and I'm I'm just, you know, thank you, everyone, for for, you know, hearing my concerns here. I I I'm not necessarily trying to convince anyone. I just feel like I need to state it for the record. But the fact that that. Colleges cannot figure this out when they are able to put their student athletes into living quarters together. And the amount of cancellations we're seeing, I look at my sports app every day. But in our community, we're going to send these kids home every day to interact with one, two, three, five, seven. Different adults and and I hear the argument that, you know, we're training these families. The families know that they need to be responsible, too. That's just a numbers game to me and it just feels risky. You know, the amount of touch points that our student athletes are going to have and then come together worries me. So. Thanks for letting me state those reasons. For all those reasons, I I can't give a yes vote tonight. I am eager to continue to have this conversation as we monitor the change in in cases in our community. In January and February. And I'm I'm heartbroken that, you know, this once in a century pandemic is affecting, you know, this class of students. I'm heartbroken that our seniors last year didn't get graduations. And it's just it's bad all around. So again, thanks for hearing me out. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion, Mr. Raven?
Part of my perspective on this is, you know, Mr. Sears, Ms. Pyer, I'm actually with you in in being against it. But in application of it, I can't be because I I feel like. We are at a crossroad here where we have. What seems like the entire athletic community that is actually asking to to still allow their kids to to be involved in sports. You know, Madden and NBA two K can only take you so far. You know, you they have to be able, kids have to be able to have that escape to be able to be out there. My my thought is is that if we had ninety percent of Durham asking, you know, teachers and students asking for schools to open. Our our entire perspective on what we would be advocating for would be different because, you know, we we're supposed to be able to represent the area in which we live and represent the community. And from what I've seen and from what I've heard, it seems as if the entire athletic community. From what I've heard is advocating for it. I have not received one email from one parent or phone call in which their kids are involved in athletics and they're asking us, you know, don't tell my kid this, but please. Don't allow athletics to open up. So from that perspective, even though it's not my choice, I have to be able to respect the the requests for this extracurricular activity. And I have to be able to look at, you know, what are these kids losing out on scholarships? Yes. What are we losing out on possible enrollment? Because we know we know how how important sports are. Some people, you know, they they try to grapple with the importance of of athletics versus sports. To me, they they are in alignment with one another, you know. As some people don't agree with that, but that's just the reality that we live in as a culture in our society. So for that reason, you have some kids that without sports, they're not incentivized to pursue academics. And sometimes maybe it's because before they're in their twenties, before they can actually grasp that appreciation for the academics that they gained. While pursuing that 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 athletic pursuit. So I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily support my kids doing it, but I have to respect the the wishes of the parents. So for that reason, I would support allowing athletics to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Raven. If there's no additional discussion, Ms. Pyer, others.
I have been in conversation with. With families and. I have read emails from students, from educators. We are reconsidering a vote. And we have said a couple of things about it. In terms of like there not being urgency. However, there is a will from from parents and and including our our principals have advocated in some instances for this. My my concern is. Similar to what we have all talked about in terms of like how reopening our schools fully with sports, with programming. With music, with art. With, you know, meals that every child can have with. You know, EC kids getting everything. It's contingent on the entire community doing what it can. It's contingent on sacrifice. I cannot tell. One group of of folks to abstain from even enjoying a Thanksgiving dinner. We told them not to gather for Thanksgiving. We were telling them not to gather for Christmas. Or, you know, holidays, for all the holidays that we have in this month. We are asking a community to sacrifice something for the benefit of the whole. We have asked a lot of people many things, you know, to to try to figure things out like, you know. Our own mayor, like our own, there's so many ordinances coming from the state, too. Bars are closing at nine, like there's a whole lot of things, like there's 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 things in place right now at this time. The community as a whole, but what I'm what I'm going to ask everybody here to consider is this. There are many kids who want to come to the schools to do different things. Like I said, like there's music, instruments that haven't been played. A lot of singers who would love to have an audience, who would love to have to to use our buildings to do things. Creative talent, I think everybody is suffering right now. The question is to reconsider a vote that we already voted on. We voted on this already. Then how many other votes can families have and they have a right to do so and say, well, you need if you reconsidered that vote? You can reconsider this vote and this vote and this vote. And then how are we arbitrarily choosing which votes to reconsider? It's great that we're reconsidering it, but I I'm going to go for equity. When I talk to the parents, marginalized communities, a lot of folks were saying, you know, number one, sports. There's still an equity divide in there. There are a lot of kids who have not had an opportunity to display their talent in sports, who are trying to get into sports. And I I I do I agree with all of you. I I agree that outdoor playtime is very important and athletics is very important. I agree. So then my question to you all is, what are you going to do for all those other kids who are not currently in any teams? Who, for whatever reason, because they got suspended? Because in any schools, there are certain things about who gets to play and who doesn't get to play are not going to have that chance. So are we going to have an equity day where you we're going to figure out our, you know, an outdoor day for? All our kids to get conditioning, all our kids to get outside playtime, to get bonding, to get social bonding and all that? My question is equity here. My question is about equity, exactly about equity, because if we are willing to reconsider a vote. Because understandably, people are being missing out of opportunities, but the opportunities are being missed out all over the place. And my heart right now says this is not equity. This is not equity when many other families have reached out to us about other votes we've done that they don't agree with and they want us to reconsider. And some parents have told me board members are not even getting back to us about those things. So is it urgent? Our rates are really high right now. We are in a month that has holidays and we are telling people sacrifice something for the whole. Sacrifice for the community because we want those rates to go down. We want our schools to reopen. I want our schools to reopen. I know kids are not learning the same. I know that this year is not the same to test. You know, we're going to test kids in 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 a time. When they are not at their best because they haven't had the in person, they haven't had the benefit of that. They haven't had the whole curriculum that we offer. CTE pathways, like there are a lot of kids who have enjoyed those workshops, whether it's culinary, whether it's hands-on stuff, auto mechanic, you name it. They're being deprived of all that. But we're willing to reconsider one vote. What are you going to do for equity for all the other kids who would like to have opportunities to use our buildings? To expand their creativity, their knowledge? This is about what is what is DPS really setting a precedent for? And I'm saying we're all suffering. There are so many families who are suffering, families who didn't even have, you know, their 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 family meals. They sacrificed their own holidays, their own religious holidays, their their religious institutions. Who have also done sacrifice. And are the rituals, you know, the ceremonies, the gatherings. The love that is for through bonding and through activities. My 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 hesitation to this is what are we saying DPS? What is urgent and what is absolutely necessary when people are dying? And when we have had black and brown, especially, we look at the demographics, who are most impacted by this? Who are the people and those beds that we talked about are ninety percent, ninety ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of beds, right? And this is not about whether they're spread at the field. This is not about whether whether the swimming is going to be an issue or whether the cheerleading is going to be an issue. This isn't about one single factor. This is about the whole. And the message we're sending, because if I say we're going to make an exception here. There are other people who are going to take that and say, okay, well, we're, you know what, maybe this is a suggestion. Maybe, you know, maybe I I don't need to sacrifice so much. We need everybody on board with this. And so my petition to you is. Is this an urgent reconsideration of a vote we already did? And being that the motion's on the floor, I I I don't feel this is equitable. And I'm going to I'm going to I'm going to look to the community to see what other ways. You know, we are not listening to requests from other folks about things they they would like to have right now that they can't have. Because we're all suffering and because we're in the middle of a pandemic at this moment in this time. And we're trying to get our kids back in school because they need to learn. We're trying to get back, we're trying to make sure that those metrics go down so that everybody can come back to the building. EC kids can get what they need, the therapies they need, whatever whatever kids need, we need to do something as a community and set a message. That we're all suffering and we we can only do it if we all pitch in and deprive ourselves to a degree. I'm a musician and I'm an I'm an artist. And, you know, and I'm an outdoors person and an outdoors enthusiast. And I know that so many of you are also and our kids are athletic, our kids are creative, our kids are brilliant. I think institutions need to understand this is not a typical year. And colleges are making exceptions. I'm talking to college advisors, I'm talking about college folks who are saying that they're not holding that against kids. And if there's a college that is holding the fact that kids can't play tournaments right now against kids, we need a we need we need we need all the activists and advocates to rise up. And talk about that injustice because this is not a typical year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pyer. Okay, there is a motion on the floor floor that we can vote on. Is there further discussion before I do a roll call vote?
I'll just, can I just make a really quick point here? The reason that I brought it back up is is like Mr. Ray, Mr. Raven said, is just overwhelming overwhelmingly. For sports, emails, communications, calls, so forth, that I that I've been getting. And I did want to make a point that. I understand that not everyone's children may play sports or would would need some sort of. Some sort of scholarship or or help to attend college. I recognize that. Not everyone's an athlete, you know. But there are many, many who are are playing sports. And those around us, the communities around us are playing sports. And colleges and universities are looking at those who are playing sports. Looking at your records and your your abilities from your junior year. Don't they don't quite fly with college recruiters. They may because some stand out. But some, you know, some may not have been starting. Some may not have actually come to fruition with their talents until their senior year. And and doing this gives even the slightest possibility of, you know, providing an opportunity. We have plenty of athletes. We have, we we've seen over the the months that other districts have been playing in sports. We've seen that, we've seen them be successful, we've seen season starts. And so I just want to, I wanted to take a moment to say, I I I think everyone here is very aware of the the challenge that we have as a community, as a nation. The United States as a nation, as a as a world, to tell you the truth. But, you know, sometimes this is the only way out. This is the only opportunity some people get. And if we can provide any sliver of hope or any sliver of, you know, balance or normalcy to athletes. You know, that has been improved, you know, it's been improved by the state sports association, I say we do it. You have to understand, some of these kids have been playing these sports since they were toddlers. And that is part of their life. This is part of their lives. This is something that they that, you know, you know, some of us do programming like myself. I've been programming a really long time. It's part of me. Some people read a lot, some people jog, some people walk, whatever it might be that you've been doing your entire life. You get to your senior year and it's taken away. You get to any point and it's taken away. That is a huge challenge mentally. And physically on each each person. So I'm asking for a little bit of. Understanding here of we can safely bring these students back. Give them the the. A little bit of balance, a little bit of normalcy. To help and possibly help them on their way. That's all I'm asking and that's why I decided to bring this forward.
Ms. Lewis.
I'm sorry, I'm not saying a whole lot because I am nursing the migraine right now. But I did want to say and share that I supported this motion previously because it is a choice for our student athletes and their families to consider. And safety measures being in place. Ms. Pyer, I hear everything that you're saying and look at this across the board and spectrum as a community, we definitely have to take responsibility. To slow the spread of COVID and the precautions that are in place. And I also hear. What has encouraged me even more since the decision and it was voted down previously was to hear from the principals. Those are the ones with boots on the ground closest to the students and know the impact that this decision has on them. And to see the principal leadership step up and reach out to board members after that decision. And to see the principal leadership step up and reach out to board members after that decision. Keeps me in the, in the mindset to continue to support this motion. Thank you for bringing it back up and I'm ready to. Call for the question. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Amstead.
Um, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think. Thank you, Ms. Vayadara, for your, for your comments. We all are sacrificing right now. I wish that more folks were, were sacrificing right now. And I think what appeals to me in, in this sitting with me, I met with the principals last week, is that students are losing opportunities. In a perfect world, we had places where everyone was kind of stopping and recognizing the moment that we're in. And so it, the, the tension with me right now is that students are losing opportunities and. That, that hurts me. And so I think. This is a choice, families are making the choice. I'm glad that we are going above and beyond and educating our families so they know the risk. I think that's so important and that our student athletes, like, there's responsibility that I, um. Hope that we've seen so far with, I think volleyball that's going now and. Hope our families are going to take that extra responsibility. We, if this, um. Motion were to pass because we do have to do some sacrificing and we do have to. Make sure that we're following the right, um, health guidance to keep this pandemic under control. But it hurts me to know that a student might miss two seasons. And, and that's challenging. So I'm, I've been wrestling with this and thinking about this decision, um, for a while, but I just want to add those comments and thank everyone. Um, for your comments today.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the conversation, administration for their presentation. Of, of information. Ms. Amstead, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Raven.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadara. I didn't hear that, Ms. Vayadara, sorry.
I vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Byer. Ms. Lewis.
I vote aye.
And the chair votes no, the motion passes four to three. Administration, we assume that you will get that information out. Pronto. We know a lot of families are looking for that. Thank you all very much for the, the robust conversation. Administration, we are on to item ten, I believe, uh, which is a summary of follow-up items.
Think this is my meeting and so the follow-up, I'm looking at Dr. Mo, the follow-up items I have. In, um, regards to Ms. Byer's comments and looking at the, the moderate metrics. Specific in the COVID nineteen dashboard for staff to take a look at that as well as. Continuing to be transparent regarding attendance and grades and how we're making contact with our families.
Thank you. Board, I'll accept a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
I move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Amstead, that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Amstead, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Raven.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadara. I'll come back to Ms. Vayadara, Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ms. Vayadara, are you with us? Looks like the screen has frozen, so we will go into closed session with a vote of six zero. Thank you, administration. Public, we will be back out after closed session.
Now back in open session, Dr. Mabenga.
Madam Chair, I'm here to seek your approval for the personnel report as discussed at a closed session.
Move approval for the report dated December tenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second, I'll second.
To move on, Ms. Byer, seconded, uh, Mr. Lee and Mr. Raven will do a voice vote. Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Raven.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Sears.
Aye.
Ms. Vayadara.
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, passes unanimously. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.